We'll call the meeting to order. Thanks to all of you for your patience. We had a meeting prior to this. I am going to invite everyone, oh, I'm sorry, Sue, roll call, please.
Kim Winter.
Here.
Ken Engel.
Here.
Andrea.
Here.
Chuck Malky.
Here.
Autumn Henry.
Here.
Carrie Jermaine.
Here.
Thank you very much, Sue. All right, I am going to ask Desi Gibson, our new student board representative, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Desi, I know we'll refer to you later, but welcome. Glad to have you here. This is Miss Desi Gibson. I will learn more about you tonight and over the course of this year. All right. Now is the opportunity for public comment that is specific to our agenda. Anyone who would like to address the board, please step forward, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. No one? All right.
Sorry, I was sure somebody would get up. I noticed the GIST is here, I thank them for showing up. I believe that if your board works closely with them, that they can help you with some of the attendance issues that you're having here in the Schwartz Creek School District. I know that was a big concern on the board, was the fact of all the absenteeism. I hope by the board increasing the minimum on the grade point average and making some changes here, that is going to curb some of those issues. But I welcome the GIST and their comments and their resolutions on what they're going to be able to do to help you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? All right. We have a consent agenda before us. I would entertain a motion for approval. We have support? Support. Andrea? Thank you, Kim. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a few comments on that one. Wait, this is regarding the minutes of the regular meeting on August 27th. Just some of the things that were noted in the minutes. Removing Jamie from the board because she was treated unjustly. I don't know if that was backwards or not. But with the additional information that's been provided over the last couple of months, I feel like it wasn't unjust, and if there was any unjust behavior, I'm not aware of it. But if anything, I feel like the board was treated unjustly by keeping that information from us. And also, in the minutes, it says every email that was sent to Rod, Jamie, Jim, FGE, Tyler, or Tyler's group, it wasn't every email in that document that you provided. That was a handful of documents, but it wasn't every email. So, that, yeah. That's why, okay, not voting to approve that one. Yeah, or if we could amend it to maybe correct some of that.
Which one in particular are you asking to amend?
The approval of regular meeting minutes for August 27th, 2025.
In particular, what are you amending?
The comment about removing Jamie from the board, the comment about every email that was sent. And then there was also a comment about the proposal was one and a half years in the making. But it's the start of the process, and that was just kind of contradicting to me, too. Yeah.
So Sue, can we make those changes?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
What that is, is a superintendent's report, so that's all the stuff that Jim rattled off, but.
So you'll make those changes to that part of the minutes?
Okay.
And I would ask Autumn, that you work with Sue to make sure that she's clear on what it is you want to change.
Okay.
You mentioned the, I don't mind talking about it right now.
Okay, go ahead.
You mentioned the Jamie comment from Mr. Kitchen, right?
Yeah.
And then the, he passed out every email.
Yeah.
Mr. Kitchen's comments.
I guess I'm hesitant that parts of my report are being changed. I stand beside every comment that I made in my report.
Yeah, why would we remove comments from the minutes?
Because I just don't think that they're factual. And if they're not, then it either needs to be stated as an opinion, but not as facts, because I don't want people to reference the minutes and think that any of that is true. Or not any of it, but some of the things that I mentioned.
Can we state in there that it's part of my interim superintendent report?
It says it, but interim superintendent report, but, you know. Oh, and also the year and a half in the making, Mr. Kitchen, that section there.
Yeah. And then also, the comment about Rod being a great superintendent, or whatever it said, I don't have those minutes in front of me, but I was looking over them earlier. Again, proven to have lied to us, so. I also don't think that that's very accurate.
I'm confused about proven to have lied to you.
Well, the mega site negotiations for start, that on the May 28th meeting, he said that he has had no offer. But in fact, he had the offer on May 19th. And when asked in the public meeting on May 28th, he said that there wasn't one. That's one lie. I mean.
Are you talking about Rod?
Yeah. I just don't feel like. Yeah, that would be okay.
I guess I'm confused how we take out Jim's comments from meeting notes.
I'm sorry, why don't you offer her comments, or whatever she's providing as a rebuttal to those comments?
Right, because we can't, like, remove them from the minutes.
No, she's just.
They're not approved at this time, either. They're just the rough draft, or the, you know. They're not official until we vote to approve them.
Right.
Easiest thing to do right now is remove them from the consent agenda and then figure it out and bring them back next month.
I agree, yeah.
So this one's gonna get tabled for approval?
No, we're just gonna remove the minutes.
From the consent agenda.
And then we'll bring them back next month after you guys talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I don't know if we should, I don't know if we should not approve the minutes, because I think there's a law that the document has to be adopted within a certain amount of days, Ken? Just, yeah, so, they have to be adopted within a certain amount of days, so we can strike out the parts that are in disagreement, and then take those parts out now, and bring them back for that part, and then that way we can approve our minutes, so we follow the letter of the law. This is just, is that okay with you, Jim? I mean, that way there's no argument right now about all that, so we can strike out the three paragraphs that you would like to do. We're not approving those, we're just gonna table them, more or less, and then the rest of the minutes can stand, so we can approve. Or you don't have to, because you can still vote no.
Well, yeah.
Is that, is that cool with everybody?
I will vote yes, I just had that as.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a fair way to do it.
But we still have to address her concerns.
Yes. Yes, we still do, but we can, we can, yeah, we can do that and move it on.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go back to the original motion, then, to approve without the regular minutes from August 27th. Who made the original?
That one can't be done.
Oh, no, we're not, we're, they still have to be approved, we're just. Right. So we're gonna do those and then adjust them later, so we don't have to adjust our motion. All right.
For what it's worth, it says there's no deadline for approval of meeting minutes. Most common practice is to approve them at the next regular board meeting, which could be weeks or months later. The best practice is to distribute a draft minutes within a few days of the meeting to allow for review for the next session. Some public bodies have specific legal requirements.
Are you in the open meetings act, because I know that that one says that our draft needs to be posted, or what, five days after the meeting, and then we have to adopt the official meeting minutes within so many.
I don't think there's a timeline, the fact that you could come back, you might only meet once a, you might meet quarterly. I know Lobdell Lake Association, they don't meet all winter, so they don't meet for six months. Their board minutes don't get approved until six months later.
Right.
I think, I think that's an association, okay, and we're talking about, we have to do it underneath our government law, and I think it's, I don't remember the exact day, so many days it has to be posted, within so many days you have to officially adopt your minutes, and then they have to be posted. So this is strike to two or three paragraphs that she doesn't like, and then we can add them next, next meeting.
Sure.
I think that might be easier.
So Sue, are you clear on what we will be taking out?
What paragraphs are they, Sue? I'm sorry.
I believe so. The paragraph where it's talking about Jamie, the paragraph where speaking of Rod.
Where he highly recommends.
Well, the one where it says he's an outstanding man and superintendent, and then the part where he passed out the, every email that was sent to himself, and then the part where it says the proposal was a year and a half in the making, his proposal is not the last word, it was the start of a process. Those are the ones. Am I correct?
Who had the original motion?
Andrea.
When you withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion to approve the consent agenda.
I support to withdraw the motion.
Okay, are we starting over?
No, we have to have a vote on that first.
Yes, right, but then we're starting over.
Yes, and then we'll read.
Okay, so any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Sue, can you do a roll call, please?
This is to approve the consent agenda.
No, this is to approve, to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
That's, that's.
And then we'll go back.
One moment. And who, who supported it, and was it supported, I'm sorry?
I withdrew it.
And I supported it.
Okay.
So we're gonna take a vote on that first.
Kim Winter. Yes. Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Chuck Malky.
Yes.
Ken Engel. Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, Sue. All right, let's start over. Need a motion to be stated for Sue of how we are going to proceed. Andrea, are you that person? Sure, I can be. So, I'm going to support the consent agenda with making changes to the August 27th minutes. Approve next meeting.
I'm just striking the four paragraphs.
Striking the four paragraphs. We don't have to revisit them next time.
We don't have to review, we don't have to review the entire, just the four paragraphs.
Moving the, you want to remove those paragraphs? Or you're going to change the paragraphs?
We're taking them out right now.
Okay.
And we'll approve it at the next meeting, is that what you said?
I don't know why we would.
Are we just striking them here?
Are we just striking them here?
Okay, we had, we had two different thoughts. Okay. My support for that?
I support it.
All right, Chuck, comments or questions? Hearing none. Sue, can you do a roll call, please?
Andrea Fick. Yes. Kim Winter.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Chuck Malky.
Yes.
Ken Engel.
All right, that's done. Okay? Anybody else? We're good. Okay, all right. Going forward, I would encourage anybody to, you know, if you have questions or concerns, submit those in advance of the meeting, so that people can have a chance to talk it through. All right, are we done with consent? We're good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Sue. All right, next we have our interim superintendent's report.
Right, thank you, and welcome, everyone. First of all, I would like to reintroduce Desi Gibson at the end there. She is our student board rep. She went through a rigorous interview to get into this position. She'll be reporting each month on happenings within our school district. And first off, I'm gonna ask you, put you on the spot here, how's homecoming week going at the high school?
Um, it's going really well, it's just really busy.
All right, yes. Homecoming week is always busy. And so we are in the midst of homecoming week. We have our big parade this Friday at 5 o'clock. We also have our game versus Hurstley, and so would love to see you in attendance. It's always a well-attended event, and so looking forward to seeing you all out at our, at our game this Friday night. And then their dance is Saturday, the homecoming dance. A couple of quick updates. We are pleased to announce that we had a 35 N grant that Kelly Robertson, RJ, and Michelle Paul applied for at the middle school. And this is for interventionists for our literacy program. They were awarded $178,000, $178,305. And so that is a huge accomplishment. They're planning on spending that money to provide four interventionists at the middle school, and then they have a program for intervention called Program Read 1A. So we're real excited and thankful that they, over the summer, put their energy into going for this grant and actually achieved it. So it is a great accomplishment. We had an attendance night last week. It was called Count Us In, and it was appropriate, because tonight we're gonna be talking about the resources that we have, both at our GIST level and here in Schwartz Creek, our two task force. And I was very pleased to see the attendance night take place. It was called Count Us In. Lauren Ahearn, Kelly Hale, Amy Lovely, McKenna Price, Marie Offsenek, Kim Kenny, Nicole Boyd-Wilderman, and Trish Fenner put this on. We had about 40 people, is what it looked like to me. They'll have an official update, I'm sure, on that. But just appreciate the effort that's going forth to ensure that our kids are on school, in school, on time every day. So appreciate that. Nice job to our task force. We have another event coming up for families and parents, and we would encourage you to show up at the Performing Arts Center. It's our Family Math Night, and it's called Count It Out. We actually, it's October 15th, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock in the Performing Arts Center. And we have a documentary, a really powerful documentary to show to parents. While the parents are watching the documentary, we're providing math activities for students in the Performing Arts Center. So this will be a great night. Our math coach, Twin Kazer, is in charge of pulling this together, and I think it'll be a great opportunity to see the importance of math, especially for our young students. I'm pleased to announce, especially to you, Kim, that we have filled four out of the six kindergarten paraprop positions. So currently, we have at Morris, two out of three are filled, Cyrene has one out of two filled, and Gaines has their one position filled. And so kindergarten teachers getting some support through this. Last board meeting, we had someone ask about a tree, a tree that's dying at Morris to be removed. I'm pleased to announce that that tree has been cut down and removed from the Morris playground. The last final things, I have a couple handouts for you. This is the MSB Fall Retreat that's coming up. Want to make sure that you have this information. Are you going this way? That's going down this way. Be a great opportunity, if you would like to go to this, just get in touch with Sue, and she can help make arrangements for that. The next, Kim is part of this, the Genesee County Association of School Board member. She's our representative, Autumn's our alternate. But this is just a calendar of those meeting dates, so that you all have. Read this way. Down this way. Yep. And then the final handout is the Genesee Career Institute, our GCI. They have a presentation and a tour that's taking place on Thursday, October 16th. Now, for this one, if you would like to go to this, I need you to RSVP with Sue right away, because we need to get you on the list for this. This will be a great opportunity to see the amazing programs that our students are provided through the GCI program. With that, I have no other announcements.
Any questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim, very much. All right. What all, we've all been waiting for. We're going to welcome our student board representative, Desi Gibson. And we're excited to hear from you at each meeting and get to know you, as I mentioned earlier, a little better over this year. So, Desi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I hope all of you guys are having a lovely evening. I wanted to start talking about homecoming week this week. It's arguably one of the busiest weeks in the high school. We had our annual powder puff game yesterday. The seniors won, so that was a really prideful moment after a really tough game with the juniors. I also wanted to talk about Spirit Week. Spirit Week is one of the most fun activities in the high school, I would say, regarding homecoming week, and there has been a lot of participation in that, so it's always fun to see. Like Mr. Kitchen said, the homecoming game is at Friday at 7:00 PM. The theme is Creek Out. And then the homecoming dance is at the Schwartz Creek High School gym from 7:00 to 10:00. We also had our voting for King and Queen yesterday, so we will find that out at the homecoming game during halftime. I wanted to congratulate the, the boys varsity soccer team. They took home the classic tournament championship over the weekend. And I also wanted to give a shout out to the cheer and swim team, because they have been doing amazing. And also, I wanted to talk about the football team for a little bit. They didn't have the greatest start to the season, but over the course of the season, they have had really great sportsmanship. And the coaches are doing an amazing job, and the team has such a tight-knit, like, relationship. The team is responding really well to the new coaches, and we hope to have more wins in the future. The student section is also really hyped this year, which I am really proud of that, because past years it's been kind of, kind of rough around the edges, but this year, the student section is so supportive. There's no bad chance going on, and they're really just encouraging our team. And they're getting way more students involved this year. And we also had a medical emergency, and that was the first time that that's happened at a football game. And all of the students responded really well. Mrs. Damon was talking to me, and it was a student's idea in the student section to turn around and give that person their privacy to get the medical attention that they needed, and I thought that was just a great response to that. And this morning, Sophia Williard led a prayer at the football field at the flagpole, because today is the National Day of Prayer, and a lot of teachers and students showed up, and that was just a really great way to start the day. I also wanted to talk about the new form of testing. It's called the NWEA. It's kind of replacing the STAR this year. The administration tried to emphasize the importance of, like, doing well and seeing where they were to the students. I mean, I've heard that it, it went really well for everyone. Last week was for math, this week was for English, and the makeups will be, I think, later this week or early next week, but everyone seems to like it a lot better than, than the STAR. And then I also wanted to talk about the middle school for a little bit. They just recently got new basketball hoops for their courtyard so that they can have fun during their lunchtime. And they also have a drama club play coming up next weekend, October 3rd through the 7th, and it's called A Night Under the Stars. And I've also seen in a lot of elementary classrooms that they've played, they've been playing a lot of math games to encourage learning. And all of the kids seem super excited for that, and I just think that's a great opportunity for them to encourage their learning and have them, you know, like school and how that will lead into their future. And that's all I have for you guys today.
Thanks, Desi.
Thank you.
Any questions for Desi? That was a great overview, thank you.
Great, great first time. Can I just say that we've had some amazing student board reps, but I don't think any of them had to speak in front of 60 people. Some added pressure there.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have informational items, the employment of non-certified staff in your packet. And then we have board subcommittee reports, which have been very busy, so. I can do, I did academic achievement and policy and finance, so if you don't mind, I'll do the reports on all those, and then we can move to operations.
Can I just ask a question about the non-certified staff? What's a B and A aid? A B and A aid? A B and A aid? B, yeah. Okay. So, like, before school, after school? Okay, okay.
Okay, so, starting with academic achievement, we met on the 16th, and 4:00, 4:18, we started in the afternoon. We had attendance from myself, Kim Winter, Autumn Henry, Jim Kitchen, Dave Simonson, Michelle Paul, Jaclyn Thompson, Rebecca Pyle, and Michelle Gilby. I won't spend a lot of time on the 35 N Innovative Reading Grant Award that Jim mentioned that was applied for by Michelle Paul, RJ Kaplan, and Kelly Robertson, the $178,000-plus-dollar grant for literacy. But I do want to congratulate all of the folks who collaborated on that. That's an amazing achievement, so if all of us could give them a round of applause. We're very fortunate to have folks that are that committed in our district. Next, the summer school presentation was very interesting. Jaclyn Thompson from Morris, Rebecca Pyle from Morris, and Michelle Gilby, our district's town coordinator, gave a great overview of the Dragon Camp, or otherwise known as summer school, but we call it Dragon Camp. The K3 literacy component was offered four days a week for four weeks, and the focus was on second and third grade, or two to three grades behind, my apologies. All the teachers were letters trained, and because we use a lot of acronyms, letters training is basically language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. With, it also has a screener for dyslexia, and, or the teachers were in the process of getting training. The small group was advantageous for the students and gave the chance for staff and kids to build connections and relationships and confidence. And there was a four, five-grade STEAM camp held at the middle school. Michelle Gilby gave us an update. That camp was in the new middle school STEAM wing and was also supported by MSU Healthy Habits curriculum that they've adapted for younger students, fourth and fifth grade. And the program feedback from parents was positive, including one parent who said that their son was happy to give up his water park day on his birthday just to go to this camp, so that's pretty impressive. The district continuous improvement plan in 2025 state assessment data will be presented here this evening by Michelle Paul. She gave a great overview, talked about the continuous improvement plan for the district, and so I won't focus a lot on that. And we did not have anyone from the public attend with us. Any questions on academic achievement? All right, going forward to policy, we met on the 16th at 3:08. We started in the afternoon. The annual policy update was continued. Dave Simonson shared the list of policies and the status from previous review, which is really helpful, those that have been adopted or left blank, blank, or not adopted, and he will share that with the full board. The committee discussed the policies regarding. The committee discussed the policies regarding firearms and weapons permitted uses. The committee also recommended not adopting changes for permitted uses. The anti-harassment policy Title IX changes from 2024 updates are going back to the 2020 regulations. And there were questions raised about Policy 2504 regarding public participation in a meeting and the procedure for selecting a candidate for open position on the board. Finally, credit card availability use was raised with administrators sharing that there has been a reduction of access to credit cards in the district by 28%. Administrators and staff present describe scenarios where having timely access to purchases using a credit card supported upcoming lesson plans. We thank Dave Simonson for guiding us through the information and policy update options and recommendations, and that was all for that meeting. Any comments or questions on that one?
Covering and taking notes?
You're welcome.
What'd you say, Ken? I couldn't hear it.
I'm sorry.
5104?
I'm sorry. 5104, age majority. When you go down to letter A, it says have the same rights as their parents. I'm assuming when we draw a line through it, it's been eliminated?
Yes.
So, that now reads access or control of their own student records as provided by law?
If you go to, I mean, that's what TRUEN has changed. The red is TRUEN striking it out and changing the words. And so these have not been accepted changes yet. That is probably what you would add in there if you choose.
So the red we don't change, that's them telling us what the change needs to be?
Correct.
And the last two signing themselves out of schools optional? Optional what? Option they can do it or not do it?
Optional is, the highlighted blue is, you can choose to adopt it or not. And so these ones, they're marked on the changes. Sue, did we get the spreadsheet in here?
Yes, the spreadsheet is at the beginning, before the colored, before the colored policies.
Okay.
It's at the back, it says the TRUEN Policy Update Guide, June 11th. And then if you look on the back, this last page, it tells you what the policy committee went over and discussed and what their recommendations were, and some of them were changes in the law.
Many of them were adopted already last year, Ken, so I think the ones you're referring to, let's see, if you check out 5104, those were adopted last year prior to us having the discussion, but this was the yearly update, and so they marked them as though they're still optional. We already adopted them into board policy at some point last year during one of the policy reviews before I was here. So that's what this spreadsheet indicates, if it was adopted last year or if we are recommending for adoption or what the committee chose on each of those items. The red letter strikeouts are changed in TRUEN's policy. They're not an optional thing, they're pretty much just a suggestion that this is what we're changing to. You would have to amend it yourself if you wanted something different. And then we'd have to run it through TRUEN.
This is the first read of the policy update.
So when it says optional?
That's the, you as the board decide whether or not you want that in there. So in the policy committee meeting, we discussed those. We didn't actually do that recently, that was some last year discussion. Those were already adopted into our policy, they're currently in policy.
Okay, so what it's saying then is it's really not optional?
So they have to go sign a piece of paper, not just, I turn 18, I can go sign myself out. They actually have to come over here and file a piece of paper saying, I'm doing this age of majority.
The board approved those at some point last year. Those two, you can choose to opt them back out if you don't like them, but right now, they're in policy.
Where does it say that?
What do you mean? Where does it say it?
That they have to come over here and sign some?
Right, at the very bottom there. Eligible students who wish to assert these rights must notify the building principal in writing. And I just happen to know, I happen to know because some students did it last year, and the parents weren't very happy, so I got some phone calls.
They also, we have to notarize it also.
Yeah. So the students quickly learn it's not as glamorous as they think it is because it kind of cuts their parents out from some roles, so.
I guess I lost this. If they turn 18, how can they not sign themselves out? They're an adult.
I think they're just recently changed. They can't just do it to anybody. They could before.
Well, they can, but they have to come down here and fill out a piece of paper asserting that right. They're not 18, and they can sign themselves out.
Okay, and then Sue mentioned it has to be notarized. There's nothing in here that says it has to be notarized. Am I missing it?
It's on the document.
Where?
It's where?
On the document, that it has to be notarized.
She's saying a sample document.
The paper they sign, I believe it says on there, has to be notarized.
There's a sample document, Ken, that's not included.
Okay, well, the policy says eligible students who wish to assert this right must notify the building principal in writing. Here it is, I'm going to sign myself out. It doesn't say about a form, it doesn't give a number of a form, it doesn't say it has to be notarized. Says all they got to do is notify the building principal.
Yeah, notify the building principal that you want to go through the process of doing age of majority. I mean, I agree that it could be more clear.
Is the process in the policy?
There's nothing here. It says, again, if you read the sentence, eligible students who wish to assert these rights must notify the building principal in writing. Period.
Jim, is it possible that then the process at the building, administrative process, is to have them come here?
That's our practice, that would be the practice that we do.
Okay.
That can be tweaked. That whole sentence can be tweaked if you'd like.
Well, to me, it's kind of like what we do sometimes with other stuff. We gave somebody busy work. We told them to notify the building principal in writing, but then we're going to turn around. Well, here's a form, and now you have to go over to the administration building and have someone notarize it. We're not, we're not doing what we've written. I could have grabbed a scratch of this paper, notify, and send a love note to the building principal saying, hey, I'm going to start signing myself out.
Yeah, I'm president, yeah, just give me a second, Ken, here. The school principal, the high school principal's here, I think. Is the high school principal here?
Yeah.
Just give her one minute to explain how it's working now. That way, it might help us transition into the other department.
Thank you, Jamie.
So to my understanding, legally, how we have to do it at the high school is a student comes in and notifies me in writing an email. Usually, they say, I want to get an age of majority form. We have the forms in the high school that we've been provided, we didn't make those forms. And then we give those forms to the student. With what I did last year was an extra step because we did have some parents that were upset with, that we had to give that to them, but I've explained that we have to legally give that. I don't, it's not my control that I give that to them. So I put a form in place that goes with the form that they have to fill out, explaining what it is, what actually age of majority is, so that parents can see that. We also then email that to the parent after the student requests it. Now, we started that last year, so that they know. Because we have to legally inform them in writing through a letter in the mail, but that takes a long time. By the time the parent gets that, their student has already turned in the age of majority and has already signed them out, themselves out. So that was just one extra step that we did, that we emailed them. But unfortunately, no, once they turn 18, they don't just have the rights without that form on file. And then once we have it on file, we just keep it, and it's fine. And our secretaries, our notaries, so most of the time, it doesn't even come over here at all. Unless we don't have the notary there that day, then we have to send them over here.
So what you're saying is, like, you're saying where are those processes laid out?
None of that's in our policy.
Right, that's where I see it.
None of it.
But it's then.
Not saying it's right or wrong, it's just.
Do you have, like, a form that, like, you have, or is it, how do you know?
When I took over as principal, and I asked what age of majority was, they said, this is the form that we use.
Forms are everything.
And then I created a memo that went along with that so that it explained to the parents and the students what it is.
Because it's nowhere in the handbook or in the policies.
It's not something we, it's not something we usually want to advertise to students because once they have that, they do have all the rights in the world to do whatever they want with their attendance. So we keep talking about attendance rates, and we have to remember those things once our kids are older and especially senior year.
Well, we can always, I mean, you know, discipline them accordingly with that. We still have tools to do that if they do that, so.
You can leave it out of the handbook, but you have to put it in your court.
Yeah, why don't we just, yeah, you just want to clear it up a little bit so it's more specific, what the high school principal's position is on it, what our official, what our official form is on, it should be a sample form. And I think we're good.
And if you guys have a different policy that you want us to follow, just tell us, and I'm just operating.
I think that's a state law, we can't violate that.
It's not, it's not, what you're doing is perfectly fine, the problem of it is, that's not what our policy says.
Got it.
It doesn't bring up a form, it doesn't bring up anything.
So, I email with you, and we'll figure out what your process is, and we can add to the policy, and we can bring it next month to the next read.
I can share with Jim the form that the parents fill out, and then I can share also with the attachment that we put, which has got our letterhead and our memo on it.
There's a form parents fill out, or the students?
Well, the students, sorry, the students. We encourage the parents to show, we encourage the student to show the parents the letter because we tell them it's going in the mail regardless. So your parent is going to see it at least within 10 days. You should probably get ahead of this and maybe tell them ahead of time because they're going to get this in the mail. So we try our best.
That's good, because then the parent calls up here and there's no kid, and then they don't know about the form. So just, you guys work it out and get the form spelled out.
Well, now that we're making it public, I don't know what's going to happen. But before this, like, we would have, it's really word, once one student does it and it starts going around, then it sometimes. So last year, I think we had a roughly 10, but don't quote me on the number, but it wasn't a huge amount because, again, we don't advertise.
But they're going to fight with their parent. If they have a parent that says, you're living in my household, and this is the rules, they're just not going to willy-nilly let that kid do whatever.
I mean, ultimately, there isn't anything any of us or the parent can do if they fill out that form.
But it is in the handbook that they have to have doctors out to come back, right?
Yes. They still have to follow our attendance.
And they check themselves, they can't leave for lunch and come back, you know what I mean? There's another going to have absences in their class, so.
Right.
He just wants it spelled out, which is shit.
What I'm getting at is, she just went through an entirely whole process that doesn't exist.
That's what I'm saying, that's what you want, yeah.
And that's why we have policies, because that's what runs the district. So.
So we can add that, Ken. And these come from TRUEN, and then it's up to us to make the recommendations.
Then.
Thank you, Jamie.
Then my question would be, ask TRUEN, are we even doing this right? Because either TRUEN butchered this, or we're just doing what we want to do, and it's not the law, because if TRUEN, who we hire and pay lots of money to, come up with this, none of that other stuff has been mentioned. So, yeah, let's figure this one out.
And I'm sure each district has a unique possible guideline.
Really, they should, they should be following the law.
Well, they do, Ken. If you look down here, they always default, because I've read these policies, and I can't remember them all. But if you look down here, when they strike out the red, the red means they want to follow the law, I think, or it's violating the law. This is how they do a lot of things, because they're very vague, TRUEN is, because we've had this problem before, right, board? That's why I bring up the stuff, and Autumn has. And then they'll drop down here, it says, follow MCL 380, and they'll always, like, default to something like that. So it may be vague in their policy, and then they're making us, they're just adopting the MCL, saying, you have to follow MCL. I've noticed that on a lot of other things, but that form should be spelled out. I agree with you 100%. Just to CYA our books, in case.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
And that leaves, stays consistent for every student, actually.
You guys are going to work it out.
Thank you, Mrs. Damon, for clarifying, appreciate it. All right, if there are no other questions for policy, I inadvertently did not include bond committee report.
I think it's in there.
Well, no, I didn't mention it, that it was one of the reports. So I'm going to go to bond committee. We met on the 23rd. Chuck Mulkey, Jim Kitchen, Dave Simonson, Jamie Cullen, Bill Loder. We had some committee members from the public who have been generous with their time. Shelley Thompson, Jenny Wolgast. From the public, we had Mr. Pobosik, and we had a guest from AUC Construction, who was virtual, Sidney Schultz. There was a bond update from AUC, virtually, as I mentioned. She talked about the cage, they're working on a mechanical upgrade and have a punch list for the cage. The parking lot stripes are underway, and a walk-through with the city of Schwartz Creek is planned. This I am not very clear on, but the two water treatment towers in the back will be addressed in October. I can't answer questions on that, but that was mentioned. Sidney shared pictures of the cage parking lot, if you haven't been by there, go by, it's beautiful, and responded to some comments about the expansion of parking spots. And she estimated the addition of 40 to 50 parking spaces, including larger spaces of about nine and a half feet. She did talk about the design and planning for site renovation for the high school and middle school construction, and the documents will wrap up, and then bids will start, and the bid documents will be prepared. And they're targeting work completion for the end of summer 2026. The high school projects will include interior and roof patching, new ceilings, some new flooring, some mechanical upgrades, media centers, bathrooms, and performing arts center in the high school, which is part of the high school's lighting and sound. Middle school band room is going to be upgraded after many, many years, and they'll have some instrument storage to protect those expensive instruments. That's my commentary. DEEP Projects, the new parking lot design and repaving is slated for 2026, is that correct, Jim? And then the district was, has applied for a grant for $57,000 to replace some playground equipment at DEEP, and they're waiting for a response. So hopefully, we're successful there, and thanks for the folks who applied for that. Mr. Pobosik has always thanked the district and the committee for their efforts, and we thank Sidney Schultz for her presentation and effort. And I want to thank Jenny Wolgast and Shelley Thompson for their time as public members to be part of that committee. They're very helpful. And that was all on bond, any questions on that?
Did we get a copy of that? I can't find one anymore.
Here.
Sorry.
If not, finance committee of the whole. Let's see, Chuck Mulkey, Jim Kitchen, Dave Simonson, myself, Jamie Cullen, Bill Loder, John Pobosik from the public, Shelley Thompson, and Jenny Wolgast. We received a presentation from Jamie Cullen, as we always do. She updated the committee on the audit field work and talked about the MDNA, which is the Management Discussion and Analysis, and GASB 101 calculation, which addresses compensated absence liability, for example, any buyouts of employees and sick days. And during this audit, the workers' comp audit will also be completed, that's the percent of payroll. Regarding financials, Jamie reviewed the August cash and investment summary for each month, each fund for the month, ending August 31st. General fund, $12,403,31, $403,031.13. Food service, $624,290.72. Student activity funds, $872,088.44. Got to get that 4 cents in there. Debt service fund, $3284,962.97. Capital project funds, $38,810,670.55. Let's see, that total is $55,566,461. Jamie did talk about the August revenue and expenses by fund and check register and answered committee questions. If everybody has been listening closely, you know that the budget hasn't been. If everybody has been listening closely, you know that the budget hasn't been passed by the state legislature. It was due to be passed in July, but that hasn't occurred yet. So Jamie has done an analysis of our cash flow scenario. If there is no state aid and the budget is not passed um, this fall, the um, we can go into uh, late to, mid to late December as a district. Uh, so that was somewhat comforting and not all districts are in a position to say that. Enrollment, the pre-count day for student enrollment is October first. Food service, we talked about this for a while. Um, they're actively encouraging parents to complete the eligible benefit form. This used to be the free and reduced form. Uh, this form is important for continuity of universal feeding, which is the free breakfast and lunch for students. It's also used to determine the Title One funding by building. Also at-risk funding and local libraries are benefit from it. Uh, the district is promoting completion of a form and building with the highest participation will receive a pizza party that's sponsored by the administrators. So everybody pay attention, your kids will be very happy if you fill that out and they get a slice of pizza. Uh, the grants, Jamie shared that the twenty-seven K loan, student loan repayment program that was introduced last, this last year, which provided two hundred dollars per month for educators, has received a one hundred percent denial. And without a loan, it's every district. Districts have thirty days to appeal the decision, um, which is unfortunate because each month the educators would get a little bit of relief on their student loans. Um, let's see, the number of district credit cards has been reduced from fifty-four to thirty-eight, so thirty percent reduction. Eleven cards are checked out only for professional development. Community education will be provided, uh, that data will be provided and made available after the audit is completed. The committee discussed updates on the diving board replacement and I think you're gonna talk about that a little bit more, right Chuck?
Yeah.
Okay, and recommended some, some additional assessment um, of the potential damage and Chuck will go into that and some bids possibly. The committee discussed the status of the L, the Little Dragon's parking lot survey and easement and Bill will follow up with the neighboring property owner. Uh, GSRP funds, as a reminder, can cover parking lot resurfacing. Let's see, we had members of the public that were remaining for this meeting that made comments and uh, committee members, thanks to the staff for the updates and support of the district. And I think I'm done with my reports. Any questions on that? Alright, uh, Chuck, I think you're up with operations.
We started out at four P M, uh, immediately after the uh, finance committee, myself was present. Kerry was present, Jim was present, Dave was present, Jamie was present and John Pobosik, and of course Bill Loder. Ameri Creep update, everybody can see what's going on there, they're doing a great job, uh. The turf will be finished this week, the flagpole was installed last Friday, stadium lighting and poles will be installed Thursday. They were supposed to be done today, but I got a call from Bill, uh, something about the fog, I believe, is that correct, Jim? Yeah, the fog, so it'll be done Thursday, Friday. So it's almost put together, uh, the scoreboard will be installed and the dugouts are completed and there's this minor touch-up on the brick there and we were informed that the twenty-foot netting was turned down and they're gonna use thirty-foot netting for the foul line so they don't hit anybody's houses. The cost was about thirty-four thousand dollars additionally for that, but right, am I correct?
Yes.
Alright, yeah, I'm going off memory on that because I just got that today this morning, yep. Thirty-six thousand dollars and um, that's gonna increase it from twenty feet to thirty feet to protect the surrounding neighbors. Um, but it's within our budget still and we're still slightly under budget for what we originally budgeted for the project. Uh, the gates were secured for safety and we took down the pickleball nets because people were already playing pickleball there. We can't have them playing pickleball there, it's officially turned over to us because the construction people were upset with us. So that's pretty much on Ameri Creep, I encourage everybody to go look at it. The staff here has done a great job on staying on it and uh, it's finally coming after a four, four and a half or five-year project. So, it'll be a good addition to the city of Swartz Creek and the district. Operations update, uh, the bus drivers completed a six-hour education course uh, for recertification. Morris had a power outage, as most people know, on September fifth, but they kept the building open, the maintenance staff did a great job. There was no major incidents, powers was restored, power was restored later that day. Um, so they kept the kids there and everything worked out okay. Uh, on September eleventh, Bill had a job fair with his crew at the PAC Center for additional bus drivers and custodians were short, uh, one or two bus drivers. I have Bus Rivers there, so I have a typo, I just saw that. And custodians or needed custodians, bus drivers start out at around twenty-one to twenty-three dollars an hour and the custodians start out at close to fifteen an hour and top out at almost eighteen dollars an hour. So if you have any friends, family or anybody you know that would like a job, we're looking for them and uh, and Bill's a good boss and John's a good boss at the bus garage, so it won't be a, a hard job, alright? Uh, the track was sealed and painted, complete this week, it looks great, um, they did a, a seal and paint. So it lasts us for about another five years till we need a complete re-coating. Bleacher inspections are scheduled to be formed on October fifteenth for the entire district. This is where I suggested that we also do the, because these weren't the insert bleachers, I think it was just the outdoor bleachers and the high school bleachers. Everybody's saying that the bleachers are in shabby shape at the uh, pool area. So I suggested that Bill go ahead and do those and we'll look at a cost in the future to see if we can afford to fix those. The LLC survey, which uh, Kerry went over, is completed. Bill wanted guidance from the board on how to proceed, options were discussed and the grant funding for the office falls still in play at the end of the season. Uh, a person that lives to the uh, south of the building, right, south, yes. It has about fifteen feet and we didn't know, so when the building was originally sold, uh, fifteen foot of his property was on the school or vice versa. So regardless, he owns it. So we're trying to negotiate a deal if not, we'll put a curb up and uh, go ahead and pave it later in the day. The parking lot's completed at the cage, as Kerry said, the rooftop units are operational and they'll be starting the second project. The only thing, there had to be a de-acceleration lane, it had to be approved by the city. But everything's looking good there. Uh, Bill is changing, or he would like to look at changing elevator contracts. Uh, discussions ensued because some of the prices were cheaper, but we wondered about the hourly rate. So he's gonna do further research, get back to us on that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, John Pobosik talked about the mega site, the new school proposals and where everything was at. I told him that we have a three-part committee, a buying committee, a selling committee and purchasing property committee, if you'd like. I think that is this Monday, is it Monday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm sorry, I misspoke my. Selling, no, building proposals and property, yep. Is that what I said? Yeah, well, builder, yeah, building costs. Um, and, now he made me lose my. No, sorry, John Pobosik. So those are the three uh, committees and I encouraged him to uh, come to the meeting on Wednesday at four P M, they start. It's four, five, six, and I think that's it for the three committees. If they don't go over, um, extensive conversation on bus shuttles and Dave explained about the status and operational procedures along with Bill, which I was a little confused on it. Dave, I hate to put you on the spot, I'm gonna let him explain it because, you know, we have our split grades and uh, some of the kids are waiting in front of the elementary schools and, and they're unattended. So go ahead, Dave, for that.
Yeah, so the, the question is about the, the shuttle from the lower elementary to the upper elementary in the morning, I think primarily. And so, uh, we have certain groups of students, both at Cyrene, at Morris, that are traditionally walkers, but since we have them in the upper elementary buildings, DEEQ and Elms respectively, they can walk to the lower elementary building as their bus stop and catch the shuttle bus to get up to their school, whether it's DEEQ or Elms. So I think that's, that's the, the big question right now. So in the morning time, uh, some of those students can arrive earlier than we have staffing there or uh, you know, are waiting outside for the bus to come, that's their bus stop, that's what it's been for the last few years. And so it was the, the question posed is what, what do we, what do we do about that? Um, what I did, and I talked to a few of you already about this, what I did as the principal at Elms is I, you know, contacted those families and kind of talked to them about the arrangement, um, you know, very few had issue with the process, um, but there was a couple that, you know, parents left a little early for work and their kid got out the door on their own to go catch the shuttle and, you know, once in a while you get a couple of kids that are showing up a half an hour, forty minutes early and just playing around at Morris or Cyrene unattended. So it's just kind of one of those things where uh, we need to uh, ensure that we have safety for the kids while they're waiting for the bus. Uh, best if they don't show up too early to catch the bus and uh, then when they catch that shuttle, we're all set.
And we suggested maybe writing a letter to the parents, again, I think some notes were sent out. Uh, but my concern was if they did show up ten or fifteen minutes early in the winter time and it's cold, maybe we can make some potential arrangements. I, I don't know how much chaos it'll cause, causing elementary schools.
Yeah, we, we can talk about that, it, it comes down to a staffing and a supervision piece, so yeah, we can talk about it.
We can see that the shuttles leave every, uh, a consistent time every day because I, I'm getting, I'm getting information like it. It's not, it, it fluctuates.
We have John here also, who can speak to real specifics, but we have identified that uh, seven forty-five to eight o'clock is mostly when those students are showing up. And if we're providing supervision, we want to find a way to do that, especially for our walkers who are coming. But it is eight o'clock and, uh, eight o'clock and eight-ten when those shuttles are, are leaving.
Do we have a head count on the number of walkers?
I don't have that for you today, but I can definitely get it, not a problem.
Madam President, Jim's back, or John's back there, he can answer that. I think it's a concern of some parents, so.
Do you want Cyrene or do you want uh?
Both, come on, yes, come up to the podium, please.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Alright, if you're looking at Morris in the morning, you have about fifty students going from Morris to Elms.
And are, are those the students that are walkers?
Yes.
Just, I, that's how we get that straight.
Parent drop-offs.
Okay, so we have fifty, okay.
Yes, that's why we have two buses for that. And then if you're going from uh, DEEQ, Cyrene to DEEQ, you're looking at sixty-seven, sixty-seven, yes.
So Cyrene has sixty-seven kids that walk to the stop or are dropped off?
Yes. Yes, and there is online an actual schedule that we have on uh, so that they know exactly what time they should be there at this particular stop.
I know the buses are pretty accurate, so, but our only concern was that if they were out there in the cold, do they have a place to, I know they gotta stand out in the cold anyways, wait for the bus for five or ten minutes, so. I don't know if that's a concern, but if they're getting there early, I guess we're gonna have to try to.
And that many students, we're always worried about them going into the building.
Well, they have wandered around out the parking lot, getting picked by somebody, so I don't want that on our place. So I guess if they keep showing up early, we'll have to do something or. And if the parent goes to work then.
They're gonna be walking up there themselves whatever time they go.
We should give them a star if they're going there early.
Yes.
Kid's going on his own. I was surprised to hear that. Alright, that was my question, so go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions for John?
Uh, I may, when I contacted Dave about this, it, when I, when I first got the, the message in reference to the message it was sent out, I guess it was sent out by Mrs. Manning from Elms. However, when you read the message, it would lead you to believe that the message actually kind of came from Morris. I can read it for you, but Morris is mentioned in, in it twice. I called, I spoke with Mrs. Thompson, had a very, very pleasant conversation with her, she educated me on what was going on. So then I went, the next thing I went to was our board policy. I know you're gonna love to talk about our board policy again. However, that's what governs this district. Our board policy from when they started uh, the different buildings in twenty twenty was never updated. If you read our board policy, every one of those children that are catching the bus at Morris or Cyrene qualify for a bu- bus ride. And picking them up from another location or maybe at their house, wherever that bus stop would be deemed. Obviously, we deem it to be at the elementary school. So we, we pull these kids away from the front of their house or lo, or more common or local bus stop. But our policy still reads, if you live one point five miles or more away from your school, you qualify for a bus ride. There's nothing in our policy, should have been updated about shuttle buses, there's nothing in our policy that talks about a shuttle. Shuttles never existed until we started this process. So again, I'll go back to the fall of twenty twenty, the administration at that time, not our building principals, not our teachers, the people in this building failed to update the policy, including this board. And so we're running on a policy that does not address the very topic of children walking to a school and catching a shuttle bus. A shuttle bus doesn't exist. So as I said to Dave, I said either A, you recreate some bus stops within the neighborhoods or near their homes, because a lot of kids get picked up in front of their houses, I stop for them on my way to work at their homes, and I don't care where you pick them up, but they qualify for a bus ride like the rest of the students qualify for a bus ride, one point five miles away from the, the school they are assigned to. I'm pretty sure anyone that lives over by Morris is one point five miles away from Elms Road Elementary. So, again, we're talking about how we're gonna fix it, but we need to fix our policy. We need to incorporate the word shuttle bus if we're gonna do this, where they're gonna pick it up. You know, I don't know that you can go as far as times, but scheduled times. You know, again, we, we're governed by policies and we don't update our own policies and then sometimes we don't even follow them. Right now, we're not following the policies, just like the one I read here. We're not following it. There's no mention of a form here I gotta sign, there's no mention of it needing notarized. Same thing with this, the transportation, I wish I'd have made a copy of it to bring it and read it. But you can look it up, transportation policy. So, th- this is no one's fault at the schools, I don't even blame transportation. The guidance should have been given by this building and this board, and it was not.
Well, we're gonna send that, that, is it possible for us to pick up all the kids? Because I know some of the districts don't even have a walking program anymore. Some of the school districts in this county don't, I don't care how far they, but they all have the option of picking them up, so, but we'll have to do that in policy. How, how much will that cause you guys grief, John?
I'm not, I'm just, I'm just asking, I mean.
Well, whatever you do, we'll make sure it happens. The biggest thing is I have sixteen drivers.
Let me be clear, Chuck, I don't care what they do, but our policy needs to read the way we're doing it. And, and currently, our policy does not read the way we're performing the task.
Well, yeah, I don't wanna write a policy that they can't do, that, I mean, I just wanna, I wanna get it so it's a happy medium that I, I've called around some of the districts, they pick up all their kids, they don't even have a walking policy anymore, they just pick up all the kids. Unless the parents say, no, you're not picking up my kid, they live close to school, they're gonna walk. And maybe we need a, well.
Send that to Andrea and then she'll have to figure it out and maybe get some samples from other places.
I don't, I don't like comparing school districts and I don't think that's fair because no one's gonna run their district identical. However, a particular school district does the same thing, they have a four, a five building and a K three building. So the children are all picked up throughout the district, wherever they live. The four or five children are dropped off first, then the, then those buses go to one of two elementary schools and they drop the K three children off at either school A or school B. But there's no shuttle bus, there's no getting on this bus and going to that building or this building or none of that. So, they're picked up like they normally were and they're dropped off. I'm not saying that's how we should do it.
That's the way we do it.
I'm just saying that's, that's how another district, and, and I, I despise comparing districts, it's not fair to either district.
So, we could talk, maybe you, me, Jim.
That would be fine, we can work out something correct. And I think the big thing was that Cyrene and Morris, they were put where there was large communities where people did walk. The fifth graders, when they were at the schools, did become crossing guards. When the schools were divided up, we couldn't continue that program because we couldn't get the fifth graders over to the lower elementaries in time to provide that service. So that's what happened. Because they did all walk before, there was no bus, and I went to Morris. There was no bus in the, in the Linden uh, book farms. There was no bus in Winchester Village, now everybody walked.
Correct, but we made the choice to move them four miles down the road.
Yes.
The parents didn't make that choice, the children didn't make that choice and we, we're trying to accommodate it the same manner that we did before. You still walk to the school, but if you go to this school, we're gonna pick you up at your house, or we're gonna pick you up at a location near your home. But the rest, you can all walk. So in theory, you could have a child walk a half mile or a mile because that falls within the mile and a half from the way we used to do it. So you could have a kid walk a mile to school or a parent that has to drop them off early where the other children are getting picked up in a timely manner to be dropped off at that building. How school starts. So, right, well, so we really, maybe you're doing a disservice to those children that have to walk to school. They may be walking a half mile to school. The other kid walks twenty or thirty feet down the. They may be walking a half mile to school. The other kid walks twenty or thirty feet down the driveway and gets on the bus and gets off in the parking lot. And we didn't think about that when we did that. And I'm not sure we can think of everything. But it's now in front of us and we have a whole school year to think about it and fix it before next fall. Right?
Of course.
Let's do that.
Alrighty.
Thank you, John.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. So back to operations. That was the, there was a lot of discussion on that. And uh, then we were adjourned at the, I believe four thirty P M. I don't know why I have Q P M here. Yeah, four thirty-three P M.
Thanks, Chuck. Any questions for Chuck?
No, I did. I talked to, yeah, I mentioned John Paposik. He was asking about Mary Crepe on the sale of property and buying property. And I told him to come to three subcommittees.
Right. What he actually said.
Oh, trading in the old building. He said John thought it'd be a great idea to trade in an old building for a new one. But that's why I told him to come to the committee.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on. We have um, our academic update starring Michelle Paul. Do you wanna introduce her?
I'm just, we're still excited about the work. She's uh, been working hard with MyKIP and some data. And so I thought it'd be very important for her to come and share it with our board.
Good evening. The best part of the meeting. All right. Um. The continuous improvement team is uh, really important to be representative of stakeholders from across our district. And the state gives guidance with this list of folks up here that you see um, to try to fit all of those different um, stakeholder groups. And so I wanted to show you our team. Um, this is a picture of us meeting. And um, we have Jim Kitchen, our interim superintendent, Dave Simonson, our interim deputy superintendent, Jamie Cowan, assistant superintendent of finance, Travis Smith, executive director of technology, Derek Bushon, director of student services, myself, RJ Kaplan, our middle school principal, Josh Atwood, our high school assistant principal. And Josh specifically asked, I don't want anyone to think that Jamie's trying to duck out. She would be happy to join, but Josh um, just really has a passion for this work. So he is joining as the high school um, admin rep- representative. Heather Briggs, DEEQ principal, Sandy Cook is our multi-tiered systems of support coordinator and coach. Carrie Herb is a well-known, I think, parent and uh, community member and brings her um, service dog to the buildings quite frequently. Adam Zettel, uh, city manager for Schwartz Creek, uh, also a parent and a community member. And Ava Brown, the Schwartz Creek High School Student Council President. We have a student representative on our team starting this year. So um, lots of great representation across the board. Um, and you know, maybe when you guys don't have quite so many committees, one of you might even wanna come and join us. So I also would be remiss not to point out that we have a very robust, multi-tiered systems of support across the district. And this is our district team and reps from um, every building. Typically, um, classroom teachers, coaches, principals, social workers. Um, a, a, a very wide cross-section of staff from the various buildings join. And we meet three times a year, once we gather our data, fall, winter and spring. And we look at our data together and buildings um, work on how are they going to take the district plans and district messaging, um, the vision and take it back to the building for alignment. So with our cycle, our continuous improvement cycle, we start by assessing the needs. Um, and we also, just so you know, this is this continuous improvement. So I'm stepping in um, where Kevin Claren left off. And so there are already plans, goals, strategies in place. Um, and there was a team. However, we're um, adding more stakeholders to the team and we're reassessing our needs, especially in light of the new testing. So with um, knowing where our test scores have been at the state level and then our new N W A testing, we're looking at the needs of our district um, and really diving in. And so this whole process, the assess needs process is um, very deep. So we look at different areas and so we may look at E L A in certain meetings, math and others, science and so forth. We look at the data and not just data um, as far as test scores. Because test scores aren't the whole child. We look at the whole child. We look at attendance. We look at social emotional. We look at um, graduation rates. We look at parent surveys and parent perceptions. We look at our climate and culture surveys. Um, just a wide variety of, of data that helps drive what we're doing to improve our district. We've done an initial initiative inventory, meaning what have we done in the past? What have we been doing to address our data? And we've looked at all kinds of things across the district and the, the team is in the process of looking at what do we discontinue? What do we take off teachers' plates? Because we need to obviously do some, some things that are different, right? We, we've been doing the same thing for a while and it has not produced the results that we hoped. So we have to look at our initiatives. What can we add that we think will work for our needs? What can we take off the plate? Because teachers and admin can only do so much. Um, so we've, we will do a gap analysis and have done gap analysis and look at our um, data story. By the way, all of these are um, items that then I enter into the system. There's a whole MyKIP system that the state uh, keeps track of all this for our district. So the data story summary is entered. We conduct a root cause analysis. Why are things the way they are? What's been happening over the last five, six years? What's been happening over the last ten, twelve years? And where is there an opportunity to grow? So we take that process. And part of that is diving into our state assessment results. So I'm bringing these to you. I know that um, Mr. Kitchen included our score reports in his um, uh, superintendent weekly update um, when they first came out, maybe three weeks, four weeks ago. And I, so I'm gonna highlight some things here, um, maybe not show all of them, but uh, I wanted to especially highlight our fifth grade bill, uh, fifth grade teams in both, at both DEEQ and Elms. Um, because as you can see, they are beating the countywide average of thirty-seven percent uh, proficient. And Elms Road had forty-three percent and DEEQ had forty-four percent um, proficient at fifth grade in um, English Language Arts reading and writing. So we wanna give a big shout out to those schools. Um, that shows a lot of hard work and effort last year on their part, that their scores went up by quite a bit. We also had a highlight at um, it's cut off there, but it's eighth grade. And on the P S A T, it, it is English Language Arts, but it's evidence-based reading and writing. So they have to read something and then write about what they read. And um, as you can see again, we're really proud of our eighth graders last year. They're our, our freshmen right now. Um, they beat both the county and the state aver- or they beat the county and they tied the state average um, for that subject area. Eleventh grade um, actually beat the county and the state averages. So fifty-six percent. Congratulations, high school. I know you're, you're back there. I love it. You know, our current seniors um, over half, fifty-six percent. Um, were proficient on that evidence-based reading and writing on the S A T. These are our scores over time. And the red is the I S D, um, countywide average. And then the blue is Schwartz Creek. So as you can see, we still have a lot of growth, growing to do. The county has a lot of growing to do. The county has set uh, a goal that by twenty-thirty, that the county will um, be at or above the state average. Did I say that right, Mr. Kitchen? Yeah, I forgot. Um, so you know, we are setting um, an even more ambitious goal for our district to say, we want to be at least at the county average or higher within three years. And we wanna beat the state average in five. So we have set that goal out and we're putting all kinds of strategies in place um, that we're gonna talk about to make that happen. But you can see where we're close. You can see where, like I said, at fifth and at eighth and at eleventh, we were actually, you know, beating the, um, and at ninth, we were uh, beating the county averages there. In math, similar type of graph, um, showing again, the blue line. Um, we're struggling in most areas when it comes to math. Um, eighth, ninth, tenth, you see some, you know, an upturn there, which tells me we're doing great things. Um, and we need to um, double down. Really excited to see what next year's scores will look like with our new math coach and all of our new mo- math programs I'll be talking about tonight at the elementary level. Science, uh, again, fifth grade, just really knocked it out of the park. Um, last year, those are our current sixth graders. And they beat the county average. And you see, they went from thirty to forty-two percent proficient in one year. Um, in eighth grade, they're just kind of floating just under the county average. And um, in eleventh grade, we're coming up and almost at the county average. So. Social studies, uh, similar. You see, we did come up in eighth grade um, and a little higher than the county average. And then um, yeah. The other ones, they're, they're turning up or the eleventh grade plateaued. So. Root cause analysis. So our driving question was, why are students not meeting academic growth targets in math and E L A, right? Like, that's the big thing. We've all been taught, you guys have been talking about it. We've all been talking about this. And we've identified four related root causes. Um, a guaranteed and viable curriculum was not being implemented with consistency at all grade levels. What that means is depending on which teacher a kid had, the curriculum might have been implemented differently. So we're really working on that guaranteed, that it doesn't matter if you have Mr. Smith or, or Mrs. Jones. You're going to be learning the same, you're gonna have the same opportunity to learn the curriculum. And we want that um, done with consistency. But it also has to be a viable curriculum. For too long, we've given our teachers programs that you can't possibly teach within a school year. You just can't. And then expected them to figure it out, like, what do I leave out? What do I put in? So I'm not faulting teachers here. Um, we have to give them the guidance. We have to give them the programs that will um, let them develop and, and teach with that consistency. So that is one of the things we're gonna address in our plans. Um, there hasn't been a consistent instructional model. And I know the high school's been working really hard. And in a future meeting, we'll be talking to you about an instructional model that they're really working at implementing at the high school. But we need that consistent instructional model um, of what we know is best practice. There hasn't been a consistent and aligned assessment system in place and students and parents couldn't really make sense of the assessments we had. And as you heard, we're switching to the N W A platform. It has some very robust parent reports in it and student reports. And we're working hard with our staff to make sure our staff understand and can explain it then and communicate to parents. We've also made some shifts. I know um, at the middle school, the standards-based grading um, left parents a little bit unsure of where their kids were at. And I know um, Mr. Kaplan and, and folks at the middle school have um, shifted that so that, you know, whether we, whether we like it or not, everyone understands A, B, C, D, E, right? Like, that's, that's well-understood. So um, their grading system is being shifted so that parents can understand where their kids are and, but along with those N W A reports, so parents know how to help their child at home. And the last root cause, students um, sometimes don't feel a sense of belonging or are not engaged in their learning. And that can result in behavior challenges or chronic absenteeism. And as we've talked about, and I'm not gonna go into the attendance and absenteeism piece because we have other presentations tonight that will do that. But we are really looking at this as, you know, it's not just put the hammer down and say, kids, you know, be in school or be in jail. It's, they need to be engaged. They need to want to come to school. Like you said about summer school. They need to say, I would rather come to summer school because it's so much fun than go to a water park to celebrate my birthday, right? Um, I wanna come to school. So we wanna make everyone feel part of that. So our challenge statement is if, if we really align and implement our curriculum, our instruction, our assessment and our student support practices, then all critical partners, that means all, that means you guys as a board, that means us as administrators, it means um, grade-level teachers, subject area teachers, all cri- families, all critical partners can make informed decisions regarding students' academic and non-academic needs so that students will feel a sense of belonging. They'll be engaged in their learning and they'll meet their academic growth targets. So that takes us, that's all assessing the need. This, the MyKIP team, it is a continuous process year-round, year after year um, of digging into all of this. So that's all the things you do to assess needs. Then we plan. We write measurable goals about what we'll achieve and we set interim, meaning, you know, progress targets along the way. We don't just say, we're gonna get there in five years and wait five years to measure it, right? We select strategies and they have something called the strategy bank. But um, we're selecting strategies from those things that are research-based and evidence-proven. Um, we identify readiness in the district. There's something called a hexagon tool that we do that with. Then we choose our activities and braid and blend funding. This is where Jamie Cowan is, is instrumental at how, how are we gonna pay for all this? And sometimes it's a little bit of Title I and a little bit of thirty-one A and some general fund. And you know, we get um, creative, legally creative with braiding and blending all of our funding streams together. And then it's important to identify that plan, uh, communicate that plan. And I know a lot of parents, they've been hearing us talk about the scores and how low things are and how, how things have gotten awry from where we want them to be. And parents want to hear, what are you gonna do about it? So this planning process is very important so that we can communicate all the things that we are going to do to help their children. So again, the, the big picture goals are close the gap, close the gap first between our district scores and the county scores and all those other grade levels and subject areas where we, we still are lower than the county. Um, and within three years, we wanna be at or above that county level. And then in five years, we wanna be at or above the state um, average. And we're, the next MyKIP meeting, the Michigan um, continuous improvement planning process. The next time our team gets together, we're going to take the N W A and break it down into those progress monitoring. What should our scores look like fall to winter, winter to spring, from one year to the next? So that I can come and report to the board at least quarterly. You know, this is how we're doing. These are the improvements that we're making on our scores. And you don't have to wait till next September when the state gets around to. when the state gets around to reporting out on the test we took back in April. So. And implementing, I know this is a long meeting. We have lots of people here to present tonight. So I am going to just highlight one of our strategies tonight. And then in future reports, as I bring you updates on our data, I will bring you updates on additional strategies one at a time. But this is the process, just so you know how we go through this. We talk about, you know, are all stakeholders aware of their roles as we implement? Our, what, how do we monitor progress? Make sure that we're implementing our curriculum. Make sure we're implementing our instruction the way it's intended. How do we make sure that we're scaling up programs? If we start with a small pilot, scale that up and increase the reach. So for example, the middle school grant we wrote had that built into it that if, you know, this works really well this year and we receive additional funding for next year, that program will expand and include additional children and additional grade levels. So we monitor our capacity in the district and the impact. You know, what's actually, you know, happening? We can't just set something loose and then not monitor the progress. We'll be bringing evidence to support our progress. Even tonight, you're going to hear the evidence on our attendance this school year compared to last school year. And we make adjustments all along the way. So I just wanted to bring this up because, you know, we like to think that we're the, the graphic there that says complicated. And it's like, okay, if we do A, we're going to see B, C, D results. And, you know, it's all nice and linear and flows so nicely. But the truth is, school systems are very complex. And it looks a lot more like that graphic where everything's kind of going all over the place. And I love this quote, "Know that working in a complex system means adapting to changes, dealing with conflicts, and constant learning. These are natural, not aberrations. No further that reform designs borrowed from complicated systems and imposed from the top in complex systems will hardly make a dent in the daily work whose job it is to convert policy into action." And I think in schools, over time, we've really made that mistake to think that, okay, if we, if we just tell them, this is what you're going to do, we just buy this program and say, here you go, teachers, and then expect everything to change. That's not going to work in a complex system to actually make those changes. So there's a lot of things that have to happen. I also like the fact that to know that it's natural, even with this own, this board's been going through, as we all have different ideas and we all have different passions and, and different thoughts about how things should be, there are going to be some natural conflicts. You know, when we get together in our admin meetings, you know, we beat up on the ideas and not each other. Like, we, I bring something to the table and I'm all excited about it. And, you know, Jim chimes in and Dave chimes in and Jamie chimes in. And, and it's okay. This is the way complex systems work and get better. We're going through a growth phase right now, a huge growth phase. And a lot of things are changing. Whether we like it or not, a lot of things are changing. So just know that this is all part of the process. And just to explain a little bit more, the difference between complicated, complex, like, simple is baking a cake. You've got a recipe, you know, you're going to get pretty good results each time. Complicated is sending a rocket to the moon. You know, they have a lot of protocols in place, but they know how to do it. There's a high degree of certainty of the outcome. Schools are complex. It's like raising a child. You know, you can have two children from the exact same parents living in the exact same home, under the exact same conditions, and they will come out night and day different, right? So there's a lot of uncertainty because you can't separate the parts from the whole and all the experiences and the relationships. We are, this is the strategy I wanted to focus on. We are part of the statewide early math team, the Math Leader Network. And Twin goes to state-level educator learning, our new K-5 math coach. And we have a local district leadership team. In fact, they met today. And they go to lots of trainings and meetings and meet monthly to oversee this process of new learning for our teachers. The new curriculum, the new, the new early math teaching strategies are complex and require, you know, that support. So we are implementing lots of educator learning, the leadership team meetings and learning labs. We'll talk about that. The state follows these design principles. It's, it's going to be messy, folks. We keep telling teachers, it takes three years. That's why I keep tossing out three years. It takes three years when you're doing something this different and new and, and complex to really feel comfortable and competent and, and know, know the routines and know the ins and outs of all of the program. That doesn't mean we're not going to see results in the short term. We're going to see great results. But it takes three years. No one's going to be perfect day one, and we don't expect them to be. It's also those learning trajectories, I love the, the squiggly arrow there. You know, you may even see like some downturns and then back up again. So it doesn't go just in a straight line. So this, this, this whole math system is a statewide collaboration. The ISD is also supporting us through this. And it's so that children, teachers, and leaders see themselves and engage as powerful, flexible problem solvers and collaborative learners. We know that in the world today, the number one thing people need to be able to do is collaborate and work as a team. So these are the educator, educator learning. Twins already gone around and visited all of our grade-level teams in the month of September. And monthly, she'll be going in to see how she can support them, how the implementation's coming along and to communicate what she's learning from the state level. Again, our local district leadership team meets monthly. And so every time we meet, we assess and reflect, how's it going? We intentionally coordinate, how will coaches, how will principals, how will teachers, how will we get to the next step? And we plan and adjust. We look at all of our scores and we keep planning and adjusting all over the entire school year. They're also letting us know what the tensions are in the building. What, what's, what are the barriers for teachers? What do we need to help them with? What else can we take off their plates? And then learning labs. Teachers are going to go in. Each month, we're going to have different grade levels engaged. But every teacher will get a chance first semester and second semester, so twice the school, in the school year, to have a learning lab and go in and see the teaching in action in the classroom and then, you know, talk about it. So there's pre-observation, they talk about what they're going to see and collaboratively plan together. Then they go in and observe one or more educators and then they analyze and reflect on what they see. So these teacher labs are critical because the expertise, or I shouldn't even say expertise, but we, we do have expert teachers. They may not be experts at this curriculum, but they are phenomenal teachers. And they learn so much collaboratively together. So there's the pre-observation and post-observation you see here. And these are just some pictures of Twin engaging with different teachers and sharing out different resources and talking about what we can do to help our children. And the big focus in September was to open up space for kids to be able to share their thinking. So how can we ask questions and give wait time and really listen to, you know, it's not about math anymore, like, right, wrong, you know, that sort of thing. It's, how did you come to that answer? How did you solve that problem? And really looking into the thinking behind what children are doing to make sense of the world around them. And that's it for tonight. There's a lot more to come, I promise. We have a lot of strategies going on. But again, you know, we're going on eight o'clock and I'm going to spare the crowd because not everyone's excited like I am about curriculum and instruction. Any questions?
Can you send that slide out to us?
Yes. Sorry, I should have had it for you tonight, but.
I don't know. This is just me. And I'm, you know, maybe not the most educated on all the different learning types and what have you. But it seemed to me that a lot of that focused more so on teachers than it did actual students. Oh, you guys are meeting, you guys are learning new ways to teach students. But it didn't, yeah, it didn't have anything to do with necessarily students.
Well, we have to help the teachers learn how to implement the new curriculum.
Right.
Otherwise, just putting a new curriculum with the teacher and them not understanding how to teach it is not going to help the student.
Right. But with it being complex, it's all over the place. I didn't, and maybe there was one in there, maybe I missed it. But I didn't see one achievable goal. It was all kind of like, okay, let's see, let's plug this in, plug that in and see what happens and monitor it. Versus, we're going to implement this week one. By week two, we should see these results. It kind of just seemed like a giant experiment.
I can bring to you in October, I will bring the rest of the story and bring you all the specific goals and, and steps and so forth. Maybe there won't be so much on the agenda in October, so we can.
Yeah, I just.
Spend a few hours.
Achievable goals and like guaranteed, not guaranteed results because nothing's guaranteed, but data that proves that this system works or that this curriculum is about, like, do we know?
Well, I'm assuming that that's why the state, at the state level, is sponsoring all of this.
Exactly. That's what kind of freaks me out about it. So I'm just going there. But thanks. I just, yeah. I don't like experiments. Like, I want to teach, I want to educate the kids. I don't want to mess around. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Right. I'm nervous.
So Michelle, thank you for the great invitation. I, I see, I see a couple of folks with their lights on.
Yeah, what about, what about, you said three to five years? What's going to happen to the kids in the next three to five years that don't achieve these? We need achievement now. You can't afford to lose any more kids. I pulled Michigan's school data today. I told you I did the other day. I'm not going to mention the numbers. But we went down nine percent in our third-grade reading from last year. We're under 24%.
The entire state went down in third and fourth grade.
Well, you know, that's funny because I checked all the other districts and only one district went down. And they went down 5% and that was Flushing. And I checked Atherton, which is kind of an inner-city school. I'm pretty familiar with the county. They went up 13%. How did they get their kids to go up one year 13%? They went from 9.5% to almost 24%, which is a percent and a half below Rostichell. What, what are they doing to improve their kids? Because I want that, where somebody goes up 13% in a year.
And that is part of our teacher lab work, where we're going out to other school districts to explore what are those districts that are very successful and beating the odds? What are they doing differently? And to us, answer Autumn's question, those districts are using bridges and number corner curriculum like we are. And they're implementing these practices. So almost all the districts in the county now are moving to that because we've seen the success. Oakland County uses it. It's used widely, widely across the state.
Why so many have kids old between three and five years and not achieve some of these things? I need to do something quick. Okay. That's my question. Thank you. And I checked the other districts. They didn't go down like we did, except for Flushing. I checked Linden, Lake Fenton, Grand Blank, Davis and Goodrich. And they were all about 1% down. So there was a trend to go down.
Yeah. I'm just getting started. We just changed the curriculum this year.
Can you add a question?
Um, just a comment. I, I think we talked at the committee meeting. I, I'm glad to see that some of the things are being eliminated because I think the teachers have a lot of, especially the elementary teachers had a lot piled. So I'm glad to see that we're going to eliminate what hasn't worked and maybe stick with, stick with something for a certain amount of time so the teachers at least become proficient at what they're doing.
Our teachers are loaded. I don't want to, they are, elementary especially are loaded.
Yes.
So it's, it's about us all embracing the cause and moving forward with it. But I don't want to underestimate that. They're really pulling through and doing a good job.
What's our student ratio roughly? I know it varies from, because you put some kids in a smaller racial classroom if they're having difficulty learning. But what is our average, would you say? I looked there, but it didn't, it didn't start, I saw 19 to one, 22 to one, 23 to one.
When you.
What would you say ours is?
When you look at those at the state level, they're taking all the adults in the school, including like your special educators who don't have like a regular caseload of kids, right?
They have 10 to 15 normally, don't they?
Well, if, if they're self-contained and then others just pull kids throughout the day, but they're still in a general education classroom and on that general education teacher's caseload. So I think with, without, I haven't gone in recently, but a week or two ago, I was looking at class sizes. And I feel like Morris is sitting at 25, 26. Thank you. And Cyrene, I think, was a little bit less, at maybe like 24 in kin, and I'm talking kindergarten.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. And first grade, can I pick your brain, Judy?
It's anywhere from, they're probably about first grade is 24, 22, 24, 25. Second grade is about 27, 28.
Okay. So.
Thank you.
Anywhere in those ranges. We do try to keep, you know, K-3, especially kindergarten, but K-3.
Is that higher than other schools, do you think? Our student ratio, are they, are they doing better because they have smaller class size?
We can certainly check into that.
I'd like to know that.
Yeah, we could check into that because that is something to look at, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
This won't, go ahead. Did you hear something? So if this won't be the last we see of Michelle, we've, we've made a commitment to having some more presentations each month. And we appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate the board digging in and realizing that this is urgent and this is important. And we have to keep after this every month, not just, you know, once a year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay. Next, we have more discussion items, beginning with our GISD attendance task force.
Yes, I apologize for the lateness of this, but Dr. Tonnercliff, Dr. Hill, Mr. Hagstrom, if you guys would please come up. And we've asked them to share with us, you know, some of the resources that we have with our ISD. And so they're going to present some resources and some results.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Superintendent Kitchen, thank the board for inviting us. This is exciting because it's the right work to be talking about. So the conversation you just had, the conversation that you're having in the next two presentations is the right work. And so I'm excited to turn it over to Mrs. Hill, our deputy superintendent. Chad Hagstrom is our attendance liaison, proud graduate from Schwartz Creek here to talk about the work that we're doing across the county and then answer any questions you have while Schwartz Creek.
Thank you for inviting us. We were excited to see that you wanted us to talk about our attendance program that is really an initiative in the entire county. Mr. Hagstrom leads that work in the county. And he'll talk really about our tier-one interventions, the processes and the supports for family. But before we start, we just wanted you to know, first and foremost, But before we start, we just wanted you to know first and foremost, that is what it's about, supporting local school districts, students and families with chronic absenteeism. And it really all starts with the law. As you know, attending school isn't a choice. Parents, it's their responsibility to make sure that students ages six to sixteen are in school. There's another law that says, um, intermediate school districts are to employ an attendance officer, and that's Mr. Hagstrom. We call him our liaison officer, but that's per law. And then also that requirement for our attendance officer to investigate cases of non-attendance when local school districts ask for his, his assistance. And then he also assists with, uh, making sure that a complaint would go to the appropriate court, whether it's for neglect or for truancy. The I S D first employed an attendance officer in two thousand and five. And then the attendance task force was created under the direction of the Superintendent's Association. That task force meets monthly. Chad leads that group. We have members from each local school district. We have many of our agencies that provide resources to our families that attend and individuals from our court system. And that really helps school districts collaborate around those tier one interventions that they can put in place in their local school districts. How do we pay for this? We have, I'll talk about the staff in a moment. We have three staff members. The G I S D covers half of those salaries through our general fund. The remaining balance is divided up among participating school districts and that's based on their enrollment, a per pupil basis. So again, we have Chad leading a team of two, Kayla and Kiva, and he's going to talk about their very specific work and how it impacts Schwartz Creek as well.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. It's nice to be here this evening. Um, so just a few things that we're gonna cover, uh, during this time is, uh, our, our countywide recommendation that we give to all the districts. We're gonna run you through our mediation process and the success plans that we complete when we meet with families. Um, our mediation comparison by school year, uh, our success rates through our mediations, uh, and some of our community resources and partners across the county. And then we'll go on through some barriers that we, um, that we, uh, track, uh, based on our discussions with families and then the process through the court. Uh, so real quickly, running through our recommended attendance, attendance response, and it's just at certain benchmarks of absences is what we ask, uh, for steps to be taken. So at four absences, um, we'd like to, we, we recommend that a letter be sent home and a phone call made. And it really, this really comes down to relationships that we're trying to create, that we're trying to make sure are created between home and school. So not a robo-call, but a phone call from an actual person. Um, and then, and then a follow-up, like I said, follow-up phone call. We get to seven absences, we'd like another letter to go home. Obviously, it's strengthening and, and expressing the importance of daily engaged in, in, uh, attendance at school with another follow-up phone call. At ten absences, that's when we recommend that, um, we, we, uh, reach out to myself and the staff and consider mediation, um, so that we can, um, get into there, meet with families, re, uh, review the situation, identify barriers, and then potentially connect them with resources to help remove some of those barriers that are causing school attendance. At fifteen, um, that's when we at least start conversations that there may be a need for a filing of a, of a petition, whether it, either be educational neglect or truancy. Moving along to our mediation data. These are the success plans that we use. There's one that's an elementary success plan and another that is a secondary success plan so that your middle school, um, and high school students. Uh, that box to the top right, those are the resources that we refer to. Um, and then down there towards the bottom, uh, lines one, two and three are typically the three goals that we give families, um, that will hopefully put us on a track to improved attendance after the meeting. And then they sign that, a school staff member signs that, school keeps a copy of it, the family takes a copy and then we take a copy as well. This year is just a little chart that shows kind of where we've, where we've been in terms of completed mediation and then mediation schedule, but the families do not show. Um, and then I'll go through kind of the steps that we follow when a family doesn't show. As you can see, in eighteen nineteen, um, oops, I'm sorry, uh, in eighteen nineteen, three hundred and sixty-six mediations were completed. At that time, I was the only person doing the job, uh, covering all the districts in the county. Um, and then we are coming back from COVID and, uh, we were able to bring on two new people and that's when you see that jump, uh, to that thirteen hundred. Um, and, and then what you'll see later on in the, uh, presentation is that also during that year, we also had the biggest reduction in percentage of chronic absenteeism in the state here in Genesee County at that same time. But that's just kind of where we've been. Um, and then the no-shows are slowly growing on us, um, but, and that's why we've created, um, kind of a, a net to fall under that to try to catch those situations as well, as well. I'll go over that here quickly. In twenty-two, twenty-three, like it showed, we completed one thousand, or yeah, one thousand three hundred and nineteen mediations. Of those thirteen hundred mediations, we did end up filing two hundred and one petitions, whether it be truancy or educational neglect. The rest of those, um, three hundred or so, uh, petitions we filed came from no-shows, meaning we did not get a chance to meet with them. And forty-nine came from a watch list. So we create a watch list at the end of each school year. Uh, there, there's a deadline to file petitions each school year with the court and that's March first. So any families that we meet with after March first, we monitor at the beginning of next year to try to ensure that we get off to good starts and that's monitoring through communication with the schools and then seeing how things are, are going. And then we occasionally have a few unique situations where you have a student that's living in Genesee County, but attends a school outside of Genesee County and the law permits that the county of residence is where that petition needs to be filed. So at times we do, uh, have to file those petitions in Genesee County, but it's a student that lives in Genesee County, but attends, let's say, Durand or Byron. Um, this was in twenty-three, twenty-four. As you can see, um, our success rate, that's what we, 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 we try to meet with families to remove barriers, to help improve school attendance and also keep families out of court. The goal is not to meet with families to go to court. The goal is to help improve the current situation. Uh, and then this was our most current year, last school year. This chart was actually made, um, we actually finished with, uh, close to about nine hundred mediations by the end of the year. So that, there, there's a few more that we completed past the date that we created this. So our resources, this is the big thing here, is where we are referring families, where can we take families to get the support that they need? So right off, just before COVID, we got a partnership with G H S and it was their support, attendance support alliance. And so they, uh, they employed a, a diversion coach and that diversion coach comes with us on all of our mediations. Um, and when the parent agrees, that person sits in on that mediation and then we, and then if there's any mental health concerns, we can identify those and attack those right then at that moment. That's been a huge help. And then we also have, um, our parent support partner, which was new just last year, late in the school year, where G H S now has a parent support partner where that, where that person can meet with us, with parents and families on a weekly basis to help walk them through things that, that they need to work on, uh, to, to achieve success. Easter Seals, our intensive family service program. Uh, that program is a, is a weekly in-home, um, casework situation where caseworkers from Easter Seals work with families. And we can only refer families to any of these resources based on them saying, yes, they want to take part in these resources. We, we, we don't force people into these things. We let them know that these are their choices, if they, and if they don't want to do that, they do not have to do that, um, whatsoever. And then we have our, our SHIPS program, which is Shared Housing Intervention Program. That's just to help connect families that are currently homeless or doubled up, um, achieve, um, a home, um, of their own. And then G C P C, this is new this year, uh, their truancy one oh one program where we can have students at the middle school and high school level go through a, a online, uh, curriculum, uh, where it goes through a process of teaching the kids the effects of truancy, the effects of being absent from school and how that can affect them. Uh, there also will be a parent-wise program that will come along with that, uh, through G C P C that we will use, uh, to offer to families at the elementary age. So our secondary re-engagement, which is when families or a student doesn't show to an attendance mediation. So, uh, Kiva, um, Smith and Kayla Irwin are two success coaches. They are typically the point people that go to all the school buildings and complete these meetings with, with your staff and meet the families and complete the success plans and things like that. When a family doesn't show, they'll send a referral over to me and then I go through a process of trying to communicate with the family via phone call, text message, home visits, and we go through that process to make contact with them, to re-engage communication with the school and to get them to the school so that, or get them to the table so that we can meet with them, identify barriers and then achieve improved attendance. Okay? So over the years, um, we've been able to really get out and do some home visits during the school year. So this, this is me doing home visits throughout the school year. Um, previously when it was just me, that was difficult to get to on top of meeting with everybody and, and doing those steps. So this has allowed us to do that. And then in the summertime, we are also doing visits to re-engage families during the summer, um, that we have identified as not enrolled in school. So this past summer, we did about two hundred and fifty-five of those. So another step, to, to my knowledge, prior to this, um, to this process here with C A sixties, there was never really a step to be taken. So when, if a student or a family were to disenroll from a district, um, and not re-enroll elsewhere, those C A sixties just kind of sat. So what we do now is we at least do as much due diligence as we can. So after thirty days that a student has been disenrolled from a district and that particular district, district they left, if they haven't received a request from another district, they're gonna send a, um, a C A sixty, uh, referral over to us and then we're gonna communicate with family to try to identify where they're enrolled and confirm that enrollment and also confirm that they, if we are not able to make communication with them via phone or text message, then we at least go to the last known address to confirm if they still even live there or not. So then we compile that information and then return that back to the district based on each student. So these attendance barriers, it's important to remember with these attendance barriers, these are barriers that are reported to us at the time that we meet with the families. So they start with medical illness. And at times, this is, like I said, being reported to us at the time, so it's not a situation where we're able to confirm the medical illness. That's gonna be, that's gonna go on through the process of dealing, working with the school and the family to get that documentation properly. Mental health, um, transportation, McKinney Vento, which I'm sure everybody knows McKinney Vento is the families and students that are homeless or doubled up with another family, um, and things of that nature. And then our parenting skills would just really just come down to like what things do they need in home to help improve attendance? Could it be an alarm clock? Just different thing, a gas cards and different things like that to get kids to school. And then student responsibility, that's typically your middle school, high school kids, making sure, um, are we getting up on time? Are we getting to the bus? Do we understand the importance of daily, uh, attendance at school? So in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, that's kind of where we were, um, in our, in, in our barriers across the county. I do think, like I said, I do think mental health is probably much higher. Again, this is what's reported to us at the time that we meet with families. And then twenty-three, twenty-four, did not much of a change. Mental health did grow a little bit. And then into, excuse me, and then into last school year. Our Genesee County Court process data, so, um, if we're gonna file an educational neglect case, that's typically elementary students. So students between the age of six and eleven falls into that category. When we do file that, that's gonna go, that's gonna go to, uh, we complete all that paperwork for the schools. So when a school, uh, determines that it, that they're ready to file a petition, we, they're gonna come to us, um, and we're gonna complete all that paperwork for them. We'll get their signature on that documentation after they approve it and then we hand deliver it to the court for them. Those cases go in front of the, uh, the, the family court referees and they can do a couple of things with those cases. They can assign them to community resources. They can apply a thirty to sixty day control date to those cases to monitor and bring the family back and review what, what has improved. Truancy, um, the filing process is still the same, um, except once it is filed, they go through a diversion conference with Natasha Warren, um, who is one of our Genesee County, uh, juvenile, uh, probation officers that goes through a process of, of their process of identifying barriers and risk assessment to determine what steps are best, uh, next taken. These, this is the number of petitions filed over the last three year, three years. And our goal, like I said, our goal is to help families avoid this. So we, we hope to see this stay in these, in this framework, um, but we, we obviously do what has to be done. And like I mentioned, we do try to make filing, one of the biggest complaints I've, or not complaints, but just, uh, struggles that I've heard from schools over the years is, uh, the petition process is too long. I don't know how to fill out the paperwork and all the, all the different things. So we, we've took complete control of that for them. All they, we created a Google form. All they have to do is go fill out that Google form. It gives us all the information we need to complete the petition. Uh, we do that and then they review it and then if there's any changes they want or need, we make those changes, they sign it and then we deliver it to the court for them. And then our Genesee, and then Genesee County chronic absenteeism. So in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, uh, Genesee County was at twenty-four percent, the state was at nineteen percent. And then we had the year of COVID where everything skyrocketed, we were up to about forty-six percent. And then in twenty-two, twenty-three, we moved back down to thirty-three percent. And in that twenty-two, twenty-three school year, like I mentioned earlier, that was the biggest percentage rate of improvement in the state of Michigan. Um, and then in twenty-three, twenty-four, we moved down again, although slightly. Um, and then just this current, uh, Michigan school data stuff just came out as well. Um, and we moved down again, but again, in a slight manner. So, uh, we're gonna keep forging ahead with this thing and continue to communicate with families and identify barriers and, and, and offer them as many resources as we can to help improve their situation and, and get more kids into school on a more daily basis. In regards, um, uh, I, I also attended that count me in night. I was invited to attend that. It was a great, uh, first time, uh, for that event. Hopefully we'll continue to do that and we'll be able to continually attend that and be part of that as it grows. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and review some things with you. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Questions for Chad?
Good chance, Pat, Chad, did you come with our numbers?
I, so we, I presented numbers. Yes, sir.
So how many kids were filed?
I don't have that number with me at the very moment for.
It's not, yeah, okay, all right. How many kids are referred from Schwartz Creek to you roughly? You don't have those numbers neither.
I, I, well, they, they should be on your sheet there, sir, uh, in terms of, uh, how many we met with. I think it was, I think it was roughly seventy-four, sir.
Seventy-four?
Yes, sir, that's how many we met with, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Probably in our pile of papers here we're all looking for.
There, and there's.
I appreciate if you brought that, them were just some numbers I liked.
Yes.
Referred, seventy-fourish?
Yeah, seventy-four is who we, is how many we met with, sir. And then there was also, uh, I can't remember the exact number of no-shows, but there's a bar right next to it that shows that as well in the, in the bar graph.
I, I got just a couple more questions.
Okay.
When you say chronic, what, what's the number you use for chronic?
So chronic absenteeism is.
Yeah, tell me with that number.
Yeah, so that's eighteen days in a, in an entire school.
Entire year.
Yes.
Not a semester.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. So that could be two days. So what we like to, what I like to try to do with parents is, or to families, is explain that that, that's as little as two days a month throughout a school year. And so that two, when you look at an attendance report and you say, oh, they only missed two days that month.
Right.
If that happens on a continual basis, that student will end up chronically absent and that affects our ability to improve as students. And that affects our ability to improve as students. Um, so we try to make those parallels when we meet with families to express the importance that every day does matter.
What, what triggers you to meet with them then? You had four absenteeism, seven on your graph up there, nine and then.
Intend. So that's just the framework that we lay, but I also tell all the, all the people in the districts. That if you know a family is a chronic situation, we will come meet with them before they even meet a, miss a day.
Yeah, that that's what I wanted to hear. There's not a set number that the school calls you.
Correct.
You leave it up to our principals or social workers and then they, they trigger it.
That's correct. And and the minute they wanna trigger it, we act.
Okay. So it can only be three or four days. We're not waiting to the.
No, we do not have to. Matter of fact, we prefer them not to wait. We prefer everything to be early. Yeah, we prefer everything to be early intervention.
Our district's at the thirty percent at that top or twenty-eight, twenty-eight, wherever it is. So, so, all right. So any of our. Who is that in our policy procedures or who calls on that? Is it the principal or the social worker? I know you're smiling down there, Ken.
It it's our principal and then our uh, student success coordinator within the buildings.
So they'll call?
They do the five, ten, fifteen letters and they're also in communication with Chad. Yes, they do the calls also.
Yeah, I just want to, I know we had a high dropout rate too, and I don't know if that could have been prevented. Our dropout rate was considerably higher than some of the other districts like size.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. I I think they answered and I'll try to find it. My, did anybody find that document?
It's not there.
Oh, okay. So I didn't look for it.
They sent it to us and I have it, but it has some sensitive information on there. So I do have copies for you, but when we're talking about mental health and things, there.
Yeah.
There are numbers on there, but I can get you those, but um, I held off on that for this public meeting.
All right, thank you.
Can you have a question?
Several. Hi, Chad.
How are you doing, sir?
Good. How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
No, and Chad says he was.
Yeah. That's true.
Do you hate me or will laugh when this is over?
No, I love you.
Middle, and the mental illness part?
Yeah.
And and I'm not being funny, I'm being sincere. Is that the child, the parents or both?
So that, that could be anyone in the household. That that's explained to us at the time that we meet. And that's important to remember too. It's not necessarily the, the student. Uh, it could be a parent, it could be another child in the household, or just a simple another adult in the household. Yeah.
Um. How much does our district pay the ISD? Do you have a clue?
I, sir, I don't touch the money. I have no idea.
Okay.
Based on pupil count, you said, right?
Yep. Last year, your bill was six thousand two hundred and forty-some dollars and odd change.
That's a dollar, dollar fifty a kid, dollar seventy-five a community. We got thirty-four hundred kids, so yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty reasonable.
Yeah. You, you showed, you showed court cases.
Yes, sir.
When that's county wide, why are there so few of court cases?
Well, ultimately, um.
Let me, before you answer that question, why I'm asking that question is, I would like to know how many we had. But when our absenteeism is so bad.
Hmm.
Obviously, the letters, the interaction, the talking sweet.
Yeah.
I don't think it's working.
Yeah. So I, so I think that I can answer that question a couple of different ways for you. Okay, number one. Um, those petitions are, first of all, you can be chronically absent, but not truant. So a student may have a mental health issue that is documented properly medically. And they're gonna miss more than the allotted time that would consider a student to be chronically absent. And that's not gonna necessarily put them into a dynamic of being truant. Um, so there, there's that to to keep in mind. And then also. I do believe that in some districts, uh, and I'm not saying Schwartz Creek by any means, I'm just talking generally here. Um, there is a belief that the court doesn't do enough for those cases that are filed. Um, Judge Beagle retired. We don't have his attendance court anymore at the county level. Um, which was a huge support for us system for uh, truancy age students. And before Judge Godola retired and and moved along, he was also overseeing our uh, educational neglect docket. Which allowed uh, petitions to go to directly to him and skip over that um, referee portion stage, which allowed us to get to steps quicker. Um, and so when he retired, none of the current judges that were sitting on the bench wanted to continue that docket. So that has hurt us.
Well, without having some of that information, some of my questions may be useless because you don't have it in your brain and we don't have it in front of us.
Yeah.
But. For the kids that, for instance, have medical issues, obviously, they should be bringing documentation in here from a medical doctor. That's something our district should follow up on. And and if we're, if we're not gonna deem them truant. Then we shouldn't deem them as a chronic.
Well, chronic absence.
I understand that, but if we're excusing them, we're excusing them.
Correct.
If we're gonna excuse them from truancy in the law, then we're, we should excuse them from our school and take them out of our data, because it's skewing our data. It's skewing, it's, it's, well, it's skewing yours too, in my opinion. For our district, it's skewing our data. Because if we're not gonna count them and eventually get to the truancy part, then we shouldn't even put them as chronically absent. Because it's excused.
I agree. I don't know. I I, I'm gonna let Tricia speak on some of this, because I don't know legally.
Right or wrong, the definition of chronically absent is defined at the state level. And so the purpose for, if I, if I call in for my child and I see my child sick today. They're excused, but they're marked absent. Absent is absent as absent. So if that happens eighteen times, they're gonna show up. Understandably, they're gonna show up as chronically absent at Schwartz Creek, at, you know, Flushing. In Bluefield Hills and everywhere in between. And so the, there's value in having that comparative data. Where it's consistent across the board. If it were just left up at individual districts, districts obviously excuse those absences. It doesn't mean that a child or a family is going through all these processes. But in terms of the data that you're looking at and that you see and that is tracked at the state level, an absence is an absence of an absence.
So the, so the state doesn't count someone as truant if they bring in doctor paperwork, slip, whatever you wanna call it. But yet they still call them a chronic absentee.
They define chronic absenteeism as ten percent or more.
Okay, so you're eighteen days.
And so, you know, generally speaking, you have about a hundred eighty-two school days.
But. But yet in the same law, the courts are gonna do nothing with that child or that parent. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're wasting our time without.
If. I'm not gonna say that.
But you can locally track that data and and just for your own purposes.
That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at is.
You would code those absences as medical. So your reports, so you could do a set aside for those students.
Right, cuz I would like to see what our, if, if, if the law is gonna forgive them because they have a doctor's slip. Then we need to track our absenteeism differently because we're. Though those people are already given an excuse.
Right. So that, that's a skewed number then, that twenty-eight percent, because some could be medical. So how, how?
And I see what you're saying, Doctor, that it it's ten percent, which is the eighteen. But I don't want our district to show the high number that we have.
Yeah, so if you.
So how do we skew it? We can't skew, we can't skew it to Michigan school data.
No.
But we can skew it internally where we have a twenty-eight percent chronic absenteeism rate, but maybe only fifteen percent is our true number. Maybe we have some patients, or patients, diabetics, you know, wha- whatever medical they might have, which is not fair to the kids then or to the district to show those numbers.
Correct.
Is that, okay. Just so I get it in my head, and that's what Ken's saying.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
If I could, that's, that's why, um, what Chad's talking about is, that's why it's so import- important to have that partnership. Because the district is gonna know, hey, this child, this twenty days, heck, they're in the hospital for ten days.
Yeah, that's not fair to the district or the child. Yeah.
So in all reality, Chad's not spending his time, energy.
On those kids. Yes.
We're talking when, when Chad's, you know, quite honestly, when, when, when Chad and his team are involved. It, it's a, it's a significant family problem. So that is why when you look at those barriers. They're not barriers of, you know, my child had a cold. These are significant barriers. That's what we're investing the time and energy in.
Let me ask you one more question and Jim or Dave may be able to answer this. How do other districts skew that number? Are they doing it currently or they're not? They're all just like, here's the number.
So chronic absenteeism, and that, that goes back to right or wrong, that's, that's valid because it's all tracked the same. Now, a local district might say, to be honest, um.
Give me an example of a local district that's doing it. Do you know any of them?
Well, they can't skew the data that you're looking at.
Yeah, it, it's, yeah, it's a state level, but how do we get it back to us? What district is using a different data? So if I see twenty-nine percent. On my, my Michigan school data, how do we track it here? Or don't we do?
Well, they're, they're not because they're following the law.
I know that, but we, we would have to do it internally for our numbers, so we don't have such a large number.
So Chuck, are you talking about adjusting the da- data internally?
Yes.
For reporting so that we can, we can carve out those instances where it might be medical.
Yes.
And it doesn't, it doesn't disappear from reported data, but it does give us a more adjusted number.
Like Empower School, they would put medical as the reason. It would still count as an absence, but we would know if, if it was excused.
We, we have to carry two books then. I, I, yeah, so we're gonna have to, or guide the administration, say, we want two books. What you're putting out to Michigan sites and then what we have internally. So if it's twenty-eight percent here, but. Really, it's only twenty-one percent, because we have seven percent of our kids that has some type of chronic illness.
Right.
That's what I, that's what I was trying to get at, the long way around. So I can get right numbers for our district.
Yes, sir.
Instead of just comparing them. I, that's why I ask if the other districts did it that way. We'll just, there's no sense in betting the wheel. I know you don't like going to other districts. But if they've already vetted the wheel, we'll just, we'll take their system.
You know, what you can do.
Empower School, yeah, but I don't know if they've already got it.
You can run, obviously, you can run reports based on uh, excused absences versus unexcused absences. That's a common practice at, at a building level, at a district level.
Okay.
You can then exempt out, for your own internal purposes, let's talk about another one. If a, if a child's suspended, they're absent.
Yes.
It's a district decision.
First, yes.
But it counts as an absence. So you, you can pull out individually if you're filling a district level data. Well, I mean, not, we're not excusing this as, as a, you know, we don't like this, but the reality is, these are excused absences, these are medical. Maybe it's a suspension. Now we wanna look at, what's our number of kids who beyond all of those other reasons are chronically absent? You absolutely.
That's where I'd like to see it for our district anyway, so I can figure out the numbers. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. That's a great suggestion. And I think we should start that whenever.
Kim, you had a question?
Yeah, just, so then that's the last, that kind of explains what, whatever year it was. I don't recall, Chad, but.
Yeah.
The thirteen nineteen versus the two hundred and, or two hundred and one that actually went to court.
Yes, sir.
Um. That explains why it's getting there, because they're not necessarily fulfilling the truancy label. They're fulfilling the chronic absent label. Is that accurate?
I, well, I think in some situations, that's the case.
Well, that thirteen hundred, I mean, were they, were all those thirteen hundred truant or were they a combination of?
So I think those thirteen hundred mediations, uh, I think that's what you're referring to. So those were a combination of of all those things. And e- essentially, what, what we do is the minute that a school comes to us and says, we think we have an issue. We'd like to involve you, we go. Uh, we don't, we don't ask any questions. That's not a right or wrong move. Uh, because ultimately, all we're trying to do is connect a family to a resource that's gonna help them improve.
Good. Thanks.
Yep.
And one more thing, I do think it's important to know that Schwartz Creek is very engaged in the process. Out of all the school districts in the county, you had the second most request to Chad and his team. So he said seventy-seven mediations, the no-show number was high, but Chad follows through on those at fifty-six. So the work is being done, your staff is using the resources.
Eighty percent of our kids, that nobody showed up to represent them, or they didn't show to the mediation.
Correct.
That's a lot.
That is a lot. And that, that's been, that's been across the county.
It makes me believe why they're even in our district then, if they don't even care to go to something that's serious.
Right.
Why we're, you were just, you just saw our big curriculum spill. Why are we wasting, I don't wanna say wasting time, but you know, I mean, if, if I got a kid that doesn't wanna be here. And we have teachers that are putting resources into that child, and we have other child, children that aren't making it, we, we have to sometime shift. What we're gonna do with what we have available to us. So I, I didn't know that. Thank you. That's an important number.
Yes, sir.
I'm a number guy and that's a great number. Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, we have a couple more questions.
Sorry, Kim.
And then Andrew, you have, okay.
I'm just wondering, um, when you get these referrals, how, how many? Does, does CPS automatically get a call or 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 not?
So, no. So CPS will not investigate any case that's just based on school attendance.
Okay, so it's kind of something.
There has to be something else tied to it for that to be a step. And, you know, and I encourage schools that there's never a wrong time to file that. Uh, in, in terms of a CPS complaint, a thirty-two hundred. Um, and if there's ever a need for assistance with that, I'll sit down with them and make sure that gets done.
Okay.
So Chad, thank you for your presentation. And thank you for being at the attendance meeting for the families. It was great that you were there. Um, I have a question about, and and I applaud you for helping families fill out the paperwork.
Yeah.
How do you determine whether someone can read or write?
Uh, that's a great question. Uh, so I usually rely on the school district for that, cuz they know the families more than we do. So if there's a need for an interpreter, if the family speaks a different language, which we have, we have dealt with that many times. Um, or a family that has a parent that may be deaf. Um, so we, we go through the steps and identify that and get the proper people to come to that meeting, so that communication can be proper.
Okay, so you have multiple ways of going around. Okay, great. Any other questions for Chad?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Tonne Cliff, thank you very much for being here, very much. Chad, thank you. And Mrs. Hill, thank you. I don't know if she's still here. Thank you for, for your, your, uh, presentation. Thank you. Um, I am, I, I'm going to allow Desi, if she would like to, to depart for the evening. I'm sure she has things to do, she's gonna go write her next report for the next month. But enjoy the homecoming safely and we look forward to hearing about it next month. Thank you, Desi. Okay, next.
Yes, I apologize for the length of tonight, but we would like to invite our Schwartz Creek, excuse me, task force up to the podium. To share um, some of the things that we're doing locally.
Good evening. Um, I'm Amy Hart. I'm one of the assistant principals at the high school and this is Kelly Hale. She participates in our attendance task force team. Um, she does all the hard work. I can't take all the credit for that. She is the one that schedules the mediation. She counts the tardies. She counts the attendance, um, days of absent and stuff like that. So, um, she does most of the work for that. So when looking at what we wanted to discuss with you today, I realized, and I actually asked Jim if I could present to you a little bit. Because there was questions about the whole student. And what we do for these students beyond just having these mediation meetings and beyond just what is happening to. Take care of their attendance, but take care of the whole person. So they already discussed in detail what chronic absenteeism is. So I don't really need to talk to that as much, but we use our MTSS framework. Which is an early identification and a layered support for the attendance, behavior. Academics and social emotional learning for the whole child, so that our attendance is part of that whole piece. There we go. So looking at the MTSS tiers of support, there are three tiers of support. And there are kind of four parts to the whole system. Again, the four parts being behavior, attendance, academics, and the social emotional behavior. Social emotional, we have our hub, we have our social workers, we have all kinds of resources that are available to all students for them to use in our building. Um. So together, all of these things work together. And when we are taking care of attendance and we're looking at these issues, we can also put them in other places as needed. And other supports. So for MTSS framework, tier one is those supports that you would use for all students. So your teachers are teaching in the classroom, we teach them the creek expectations. These are the things that are being done for every child. The positive culture, the homeschool communication, this is what we do with everybody. A tier two would be a smaller group of people. When we identify these kids, we put them in small group interventions, we do mediation. We have restorative practices, we have our empowerment hub, we have all types of resources that we can work with these kids that are at tier two level. And then our tier three level is lots of times our special education students, and there's more intensive support for those. There's an individualized planned. There's wraparound services, and then these are your kids that are a bigger issue that would go to truancy court. So again, we're looking at the whole student. So when we are identifying all these, we have a process called SOC, Student of Concern. And with that process, the first thing we would do is identify concerns. So a teacher, staff is observing their academic struggles. Their behavioral struggles, um, their attendance concerns are then directed to the task force. There's a document that specifically examples in its frequency is what the concerns are, so it's documented. And then, so that is the second step, they're documenting the things that they're seeing, so that we know to refer these students to the SOC process, and that is where these other levels start. Um, so once they're submitted to the SOC process, we have a team, our team is admin, counselors, social workers, interventionists, teacher reps, and we review the referral to the SOC process, and we match students to tier two supports. So what tier, what their support is needed, is it attendance, is it academic, is it behavioral, or is it more social emotional? And then we intervene, we provide those supports for those students, and then we hope that they either exit tier two, or that's when they go to tier three, and they get more individualized help. So, focusing a little bit, um, the high school is lucky, we do have somebody that's, um, on staff for behavior, for academics, and for attendance, we have somebody that takes care of each. Uh, we also have the two social workers that are in the social emotional part, so our behavior interventionist, he is one that gets a targeted, like, caseload. He does, um, like referrals that maybe don't need to go to an assistant principal, that can be like the behavior in the classroom, or, you know, trying to work with a teacher to work with a student, stuff like that. Um, he also does for tier two and tier three, he runs small groups, he does, um, he teaches some resolution coping skills and some anger management. He also will offer reentry support, which can lead to restorative or engagement meetings after suspensions, and he ensures that the student has a successful plan before returning to class. And then we also have, he has crisis de-escalation, when students are arguing, fighting, those types of things, not fighting physically, but not getting along, we then can send those to our behavior interventionist, and he can try and escalate that before something becomes bigger. And then progress monitoring, he also will track their individual behavior plans, check with teachers weekly to see on their progress, and adjust supports as needed, and we also, he is in the hallways, working with students, trying to be proactive, build relationships, and see what's going on in the hallways, the cafeteria, before and after school, to prevent some issues. So then we have Kelly, who is, oops, I gotta change the slide, who is our hard worker on the attendance task force. And so Kelly, she will take, track, I'm sorry, track the attendance, track the tardies and all those things, so all those things that are in the handbook that we say we are following, Kelly is in charge of those, and she will look and send the letters as needed, she tracks attendance, she sends home letters, she talks to the students, and then she attends and prepares for the mediations, she will meet with a student ahead of time, but then she will schedule the mediations, and then her and I will both be in the mediation with the GISD, the Genesee Health Services, and we will be there when they are talking to them and seeing what other needs and things that we can help with, as well as the Genesee Health Services, they can provide many things, they also ask the parents while the student is there, if they can run a, what's that called?
MAZI.
A MAZI test, which is something that can kind of see like the depression, anxiety, what types of things that the students may need more help with. Is that right? Okay. And then, so we do send letters at five, ten, and fifteen days. Again, around five days, then Kelly is just kind of meeting with the student, that's going to be a tier one. Tier two is when we move on to mediations, and tier three would be truancy. And then they are also recommended to the SOC program, the student of concern, after tiers two and tier three for interventions. Academic intervention is also a part of this, there's, um, again, the multi-tiers. Tier one is core instruction that all students get in the classroom, tier two is targeted to small groups or supports, and tier three is individualized interventions. So some of the interventions would be reading, math support groups, small group pre-teaching or skill building sessions, the SOC process is also part of this, and credit recovery opportunities, um, throughout the summer, and so that we can get the students to graduate. So, the connection to attendance is that students are struggling academically if they are missing more school. In twenty twenty-four, this is at the bottom, twenty twenty-five, sixty-seven percent of our tier two students were the ones that were chronically absent. And then behavior and the SEL link, academically, academic challenges often overlap with social emotional and behavior needs, so again, these all kind of go together most of the time. Progress monitor, we make sure that we monitor the progress of the students, that these are, these interventions are working, what we need to do by looking at their grades, their classroom performance, are they coming to school more often, looking at things like that. Staff, teachers, counselors, admins, social workers, we're all always working together to see what each student needs. And parents and student involvement, obviously, we need them to be involved, to come up with a communication plan that we can get these students to school, and we can get their grades up, and we can all, again, work together. So this kind of goes to some of the things that the GISD already said, why does attendance matter? Learning achievement, every day builds on the last, so students who attend regularly earn higher grades and perform better on tests. Graduation for future success. Consistent attendance increases the likelihood of graduating on time and develops habits like reliability and responsibility for college, or trade school, or any place that a student may be once we get them graduated. Skill development, students build teamwork, communication, and problem solving. Daily attendance gives students regular opportunities to practice these life skills. Um, connection, belonging, if you're in school, you build friendships, you feel support, you feel less isolated. Avoiding gaps, missing just two days a month, again, they already said this one, but missing two days a month equals eighteen days a year, so that's almost a full month of learning, so chronically absent students often fall behind and struggle to catch up. So the community impact would be strong attendance boosts the entire school's culture. When students attend consistently, teachers can move forward together without constantly reteaching, same as like when students are tardy, when you're trying to teach a class and students are walking in at different times, it's kind of hard to keep teaching. So some barriers we face to attendance are the illness and health issues, um, chronic conditions, we already talked about, they can get medical notes if students are facing something more serious, and we definitely encourage, and we do not hold mediation meetings, we do not obviously send to court for medical notes. If they have a medical note, that's why it's so important, if you go to the doctor, if you go to the dentist, if you go to a therapy session, that you get a note from that person so that we can mark it down as medical, because we are audited, and if we don't have the paperwork, we cannot mark it. Um, but then some other barriers are transportation difficulties, um, cars break down, the students at maybe dads and not moms, and one lives in district and does not live in district, we see that sometimes, and there's a car issue, so somebody cannot get their child to school because their cars broke down. Again, there's lots of divorced families where one parent will live in Schwartz Creek and the other one won't, so they're week on, week off, but they still need to get to school, and that week they're not with that parent. Anxiety, depression, lack of motivation, and then when they have all these other things, they're not ready for school, they're thinking about what's bothering them, what they're anxious about, all of those things. Family obligations, we actually have issues where students have to care for their siblings, and we have work responsibilities, there are unstable home routines, so that they're not necessarily getting up for school when they need to, and they don't have that person there to tell them and encourage them instead of routine to do that. Um, they do sometimes feel disconnected, um, that they don't belong. Uh, there's behavior concerns, where they avoid class. Skipping was a big issue that I noticed last year when I started my first year at the high school's assistant principal, so we do run a daily report now to look at odd hours where students may be marked unexcused, and they are given detention or ISS if they miss a lot, so that they are being punished if they're just skipping a class. Housing and financial instability, creating stress or barriers to daily attendance, so if there's issues going on at home, that can cause students to be absent. Lots of, some of our, um, issues are actually substance use and vaping, vaping is a huge issue in schools. Students are addicted, it's not just that they are bringing vapes to school because they are naughty child and they wanna do the wrong thing, they are addicted, and that is a big problem. And then they, we talked about a little bit with Michelle, that some students feel disengaged, they don't wanna be to school because they don't think it's fun, they don't think it's relevant, and they're just not wanting to participate. So this is our actual Schwartz Creek community, school and district, I do have some slides after this that are just the high school. I did not get with the middle school or elementary school, so I will answer what questions I can, and I will look at that data for you. So this actually shows the percentage of students that were in attendance at these, like, an average rate and trend at those days. So in twenty seventeen, eighteen, it was ninety-five point seven percent, twenty eighteen, nineteen, ninety-four point five percent. So if you go back and you look at, I won't read them all to you, twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, it was ninety-five point seven percent. This year, we are at ninety-one point three percent, so our attendance actually went down about three, or, yeah, about three and a half percent. You can see in twenty twenty-one, it went way down, or twenty-one, twenty-two, and we are slowly going back up. And the top at that, where we were actually in a good attendance rate, is ninety-five point seven. High school, five-day letters, so this is a comparison to twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six. So again, I was able to start looking at this stuff and tracking it last year when I first became administrator. So this is looking at like the first week of school, so how many five-days letters did we send home the first week, the second week? And you can see the blue is twenty-three, twenty-four, the red is twenty-four, twenty-five, and the yellow is this year. So week three looks really good. We were sending out letters, last year was not as good, and we only, we did not send out any week three this year. Uh, week four, it was eleven and twenty-three, twenty-four, went down to about six, twenty-four, twenty-five, this year we sent two. And in five, week five, you can see again, we have gone down quite a bit. Yellow is this year. So we're trying to get this attendance under control, I'm actually grateful you brought it up to the public, because it is a problem. And then ten-day letters so far, week one, week two, week three, nobody ever, we didn't send any last year for some reason, two people, we had to send a ten-day letter home into week four, and then week five, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we sent one home, then last year we sent four home, and this year we're at two. And again, you can see week six, we've been pretty successful so far, six, six, and then we are at one again. And then this is just the amount of contacts with student, student contacts that we've had to have already. Um, they're kind of combined, I realize this graph is kind of hard to read, because it's combining how many students and how many parents we've had to have contact with, so again, you can see in twenty-five, twenty-six, this is still going down, except for last week. So, how can staff, parents, students, and the community help support attendance? So, staff, we are encouraging them every week, every staff meeting, there's some of them out there that are probably really annoyed with me, that take attendance accurately in a certain amount of time, so that we have attendance ready, we have good records, and we are making sure we're on top of that, when students come in late, how to mark it, make sure everybody is on the same page and marking things the same way. Um, reach out early if they notice concerns, which is what Mrs. Hale does. Parents, consistent routines, schedule appointments outside the school hours, communicate with the school, again, provide medical notes. And we are trying to get the robocall system back up, so that students are getting, our parents are getting calls if their students have missed even one hour of the day, and then possibly even moving on to tardies. So I think it's making the parents aware, sometimes parents don't check Power School, so they don't even know that their child missed a class or was tardy, and if they get the robocall, they will know. Um, students, we need you to attend daily, ask for help when you need it, and set personal attendance goals. If you feel behind, if you feel like you can't do things, missing school is just gonna make it worse. So the community, coaches, employers, whoever it may be, please still talk about the importance of attendance in the, in sporting events, and whatever they may be doing. So, celebrate student success, partner with schools on events, which we just did last week, and encourage involvement in positive activities. So, at the high school, we have also strengthened office procedures for consistently and follow-up to better support the teachers and the students with attendance. So again, as Mrs. Damon would probably say, attendance became my baby last year, and I wanted to make sure that all of the procedures, routines, and everything that was in the student handbook were being followed, so we are being more consistent, we are making sure that everything is followed. I've actually had a few parents that are not happy with me, because I need them to call to pick up their kids. And one way to explain that is that there are times when a kid is at school, and they wanna go home because they're anxious, or they're not feeling well, and that would be one of our kids that is chronically absent, and they'll call parent, mom or dad, and they are trying to encourage them to stay in school, but then they call grandma and grandpa, and they pick them, grandma and grandpa would pick them up. So we are now not allowing that to happen unless a parent does call and say that that student can be picked up, just one example. Um, again, the positive impacts of being in school, better grades, academic achievement, stronger friendships, connections, increased graduation rates, and everyday presence equals long-term success, higher test scores, improved learning outcomes, greater confidence and self-esteem from consistent progress, fewer discipline issues, and office referrals, better preparation for college careers, all of these things, improved social emotional skills, these are all things that we can help students with at school if they are there, lower risk of dropping out, and sense of belonging and engagement. So, district-wide MTSS, and attendance equals whole child success. So this is again, just more what we are doing in our school district, and then some data on Schwartz Creek High School. I can answer questions if you want, I don't know that I have all the answers to the questions you were asking the GISD, though. I do know our attendance rate, they said theirs was about thirty, thirty-one, ours was thirty-one percent this year.
Last year.
Last year, I said that earlier too, yeah, so for twenty-four, twenty-five, we were at thirty-one percent, so like, right level with the district. But then again, that is including the medical students, and I know that Travis could answer this better. There is a way to run reports that are just unexcused, and excuse, because we do that every day to find the kids that are skipping, but I don't know, again, Travis will know this part, if we can just see how many are ten percent more, or absent, using that information.
Yes?
Yes.
I was just gonna add in, we have a new system with muetrix in school data, and I've mentioned that a few times, and this year, um, we're gonna all learn how to look into that, but not only can we see, um, the excused, not unexcused tardies, aside from the medicals and so forth, but we can even drill down, you know, click on it, and those of us that have access can see which kids, it'll list, you know, these are the kids in that report. Um, and it will also flag in case somehow it misses, you know, we're human, you know, if a teacher or someone doesn't report it, Kelly doesn't catch it for some reason, um, the system will now catch it and flag kids when they're, they have a certain number of absences that are even just a certain number of risk factors overall, like you said, attendance, behavior, grades, all of the, all of the above.
I have a question for Mrs. Hale, how easy or difficult is it to work with the GISD on this?
I have really enjoyed working with them, I've worked with Chad since two thousand eighteen, and it's been really good. I mean, I couldn't do my job without them, you'd need another person to help me, because they're a huge help for me. I work with those kids, and I don't refer them to them until I can't get progress.
Okay.
If I have a student I can't get progress with, that's when I refer to them for mediation.
Okay, so you guys aren't like bumping in, because the letters, you were at some, they did four, what was it, ten, fifteen? And you go five, ten, and fifteen, but they wouldn't necessarily send out their letters if you're sending them.
They don't send any letters out, I am the only person who sends letters out to high school, and there's one, there's one person at every school that is a student success coordinator that runs those letters for their school building. So I am the only one that sends out those letters, I call those parents before those letters are sent out and after, and then I talk to those students before and after, and then I check in with those students every week until they start improving, and when they start improving, then I back it off, and so it's, and then I've called Chad, but it's actually Kayla, I will adjust the mediations for, um, our district, and we work together very well, and it's great, because I can only get so far with a parent, and then they can come in and they can go the next step.
Okay.
And we work together, and it's a good partnership.
Okay, thank you.
When does the principal get?
At mediation, I go to the mediation meeting as well.
And, and I appreciate the presentation. What about, I mean, is it better that we have somebody call and like really get into their butt about it? Because I want to help you with this number, this twenty, this thirty-one percent because of the medicals. But now I'm scared of another number you gave.
That's sad.
You said that seventy percent here hit tier two, sixty-nine percent, sixty-eight or sixty-nine?
No, no, no. I said sixty-nine percent of tier-two students.
Yes.
So that's means, that's the students that get to tier-two. So like only eighteen percent of your students are gonna get to tier-two. So sixty-seven percent of them are also an attendance issue.
Okay, good. Because I thought you said sixty-seven percent missed ten days or more, which would be tier-two. And I'm like, oh crap, that's another number now you bring it up.
No, no, no. That's actually, they're showing you, attendance is part of the whole big picture.
So really, tier-two is eighteen percent of our students?
Roughly twenty percent, eighteen.
Okay, we'll say just eighteen. I'll give you the best.
Am I right?
Eighteen or, so we still have, we, we still have two out of ten students then, roughly, that are hitting somewhere between ten and fifteen days before it triggers chronic.
Yeah. And the four, seven, and ten that he listed up there, that was, that's the recommendation of when we send letters. In the handbook, it says five, ten, and fifteen, so that's what we follow.
That, that, that's fine. I just, I wanted to know. I, I'm glad I didn't hear sixty-seven percent.
Yeah, and we also have already had
Twenty percent's a lot still.
Again, when I talk, I'm talking about the high school. This is kind of a whole school presentation, but we only are experts at the high school. So we've already had two mediation meetings with the GIST and the health services this year with students and, you know, are working with those students. We sent approximately, how many to court?
I don't have the numbers.
It was probably about, I would guess, because I was there, twelve students last year. So I mean, it does help to have that progress, or that process, I'm sorry, that's not progress, but process, because you start with us, or you start with Mrs. Hale, who's one person, and then you come to this meeting and mediation. And, you know, you have the ISD, you have the health, the health services there, you have Mrs. Hart, who is attendance scary, I guess. But, and then, so then you, I meet them.
Sending somebody scary at the beginning so they, they don't get to tier-two or
Yeah, I'm trying. But then we also, um, then I also meet them in court in Flint, so that'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So when you talk about days, what if it's first hour? Do you say after ten absences in first hour that?
We do not. There's nothing like that in the handbook.
I basically do, and this is under the guidance of the GIST, they count three hours. Half of a day is considered absent. So if they're absent three hours, that counts as one towards their ten before we look at mediation.
Oh, yes, so it does count in the ten, but it doesn't count like against
One hour a day is not gonna, but if they're missing three hours, I have a student right now that is coming in fourth hour almost every day. So they are, they are already headed that way. But I'm trying to work with, my goal is not to file any truancies. That's my goal. Not to file any truancies at all. That's what I'd love to do. And we only file when we have to, when we can't reach a student and it's not working.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Where does that, where, where is that? Where's not working? What's your definition of not working?
When there's no improvement in attendance and they're not passing classes. So they've gotten to fifteen absences and they're still missing one day a week. Then that's, you know, or before that sometimes. They're at ten absences and they're still missing one to two days a week. I am going to reach out to Chad, Kayla, the GIST, and say, hey, we need to file for a diversion, what they call diversion, which is the first part of truancy.
And that's at fifteen days?
It can be earlier. It can start at ten. Depends on the circumstances of what's going on with that student.
You want to catch them earlier if the grades aren't as well, aren't good, and before they get too far behind.
The good news is, last year, I keep a list. I have a spreadsheet with all my students that are chronically absent by grade. This year, our first five weeks of school, we won't count the first one, I had twenty-four of those students who were perfect attendance for the first month this year, that last year were, were chronically absent.
Yeah, at the end of the year.
Seeing some really good progress.
We sent how many letters at the end of the year?
I can look at it.
We sent a lot of letters at the end of the school year last year, just to say, let's start out the next year strong and, you know, try and get here. And so there was a lot of improvement.
One more quick question. If they had perfect attendance, do we give them a certificate? Why don't we do that?
A goal is a perfect attendance?
Well, okay, but if, if they, if they make most of days, like when I was in school, if you had, I remember getting certificates, that if you met your semester requirements, they gave you, I still have them. I gave them to my first employer. And you know what? They're like, wow, you show up. And that means a lot when you go to work. So if the kids are showing up, why can't we print them all a little certificate that says perfect attendance, you know, hundred, ninety percent attendance?
I know a few years ago, the middle school did. That's where I was at until I started the high school as administration. So last year it was also, do we send them with the certificates at the end of the year for seniors?
Why not? Just out of curiosity.
Well, partly, honestly, since COVID, and with all the different restrictions once we came back from COVID.
There's not many people that have it.
Very discouraged. And so we don't want children to come to school sick either, and think that they are working for a certificate for that. So that's the big reason that we don't have to pay that side of school.
I have a question about like distinguishing tardies from absences.
Do we have a policy on that? Yeah, a student is considered absent after ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Nine, but yeah, even, yeah, so. It says nine.
Dragging us down to.
That doesn't count towards, that doesn't count towards the absences for, when we're talking about mediations and truancy absences, because I will, it says when it, when I go into attendance, it'll say the time they came in. So I know that they were there for most of class. I'm not gonna count that against them for attendance. Um, not, we're working on it. It's not gonna show up like this.
And again, that's part of the handbook. So if you guys want to change that for next year, it's in the handbook. So if you would like to change that for next year, or even talk to me before we build the handbook and give me some ideas and suggestions and things that you want to change, we can work together on that.
How about a ninety percent certificate if they show ninety percent? I, I don't know why we can't give them something. I mean, I mean, to me, if a, if a kid shows up.
Yes.
Give them something.
I forgot. Yes. So those students that did do better this year that weren't doing as well last year, Miss Hale made a big deal to go around and give them PBIS certificates, a can of pop, a chip, and just tell them thank you very much.
And I'm gonna be doing that regular basis, not on perfect test, but on improvement.
Thank you.
The other kids get to see, why do they get chips?
Isn't, isn't that nine or ten minute mark? Isn't that dictated by the state?
I don't know if it's dictated by the state. I just know it's, it's in our handbook, and that's what I even went by when I was principal of high schools. I don't even know that it's dictated by the state.
It was something that came up in an audit that we had a couple of years ago, and we had an attendance audit, and they did tell us that we have to mark anything after that nine. Nine, zero to nine is tardy. Ten and more is considered absent, and that is something that they require. So.
That's, that's, that's enough. That's nothing new. That's been there for a few decades.
So Mrs. Hale does not use that for truancy, but you are correct, it would be in our data that they're showing and stuff like that.
So the same thing as your medical note, basically, right? Am I getting that?
Well, there's, I mean, the only reason, if you are tardy, are you talking about that, and you bring in a medical note, then yeah, it can still be marked medical.
Same thing, like they're not counting it as truancy, like the medical note, or the medical excuse isn't counting it towards truancy, but we still have to count it as an absence.
It becomes a unexcused absence if nobody calls in. If somebody comes in, it becomes an excused absence where they're only, you can only really excuse when your child's first coming in for the day. So first hours are excused. You can't have your child at school for first and second hour, and they're tardy to third hour because they didn't get to class. You can't call and excuse that one because, yeah, I know. They try. Like, I, well, then we work with the kid.
Okay, yeah.
All, basically, all the districts are bound by this policy. We just want an internal policy for us to see what our, for the medical part, which I think, and suspensions, and susp, yeah, suspensions or whatever. Kid was in an accident, he's off for a month, you know, you know, a broken leg can't come to school.
Yeah, that medical note's what's key.
Yeah. We'll do that internally somehow on school, or school data.
All right, thank you.
Or power school.
I have a question. Did you just say, um, you were, these kids that are improving, you're giving them chips and pop as a reward? Or was that a joke? I didn't.
No, it wasn't.
No, we're just encouraging them to be there so they get a treat.
So we're rewarding them for doing what they should already be doing?
I mean, I can see the other kids saying
That's the whole system. Think a little bit. I'm rewarding them for attending. I'm rewarding them for improving and making effort that was difficult, make, beating barriers that they had before. Because I'm not rewarding them for attending. I'm not awarding them for perfect attendance. I'm awarding them for setting goals and making those goals. We sit down and make goal, I sit down with them, make goals with them. They're making those goals. I'm rewarding them for that. It sounds, it seems like that it's the same thing.
I see them. I can see the other kids, though, saying, well, I come to school every day and I don't get in here this time. I, I know, rewards are good, but it just seems kind of, you know.
Take a break.
Yes, I get it.
So that's the whole system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hart and Mrs. Hale. I, I was gonna get there. This is, this is very helpful. Thank you very much. So I know you've all been here a very long time. We're gonna take.
Carrie, can I make this?
Oh, sure.
How about we hire our two new hires?
Okay, and then they can go.
Have to wait. But I don't know who they are, but I'm, yeah.
We're going, we're gonna move our, um,
Move the agenda round just a little bit.
We're gonna move our agenda up a little bit for the folks that are here to learn if they are, have been hired by the district, and then we'll take a short break.
That's what I'd like to, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
I can't see beyond ten feet without my glasses. Should be wearing them. But Ms. Bevel, if you'd come forward, there you are. Come forward, please. And would you please have Annie Brimmer come up with you?
Good evening. I'm pleased and absolutely thrilled to introduce Annie Brimmer as our recommended candidate for the kindergarten teaching position at Sirene Elementary. She comes to us with experience as a paraprofessional, as well as a substitute teacher, actually being a sub in my own classroom when I taught kindergarten. She was my go-to. She has a clear passion for nurturing young learners and a proven ability to create a safe, inclusive, and engaging classroom environment. Mrs. Brimmer impressed our hiring committee with her warmth, creativity, and commitment to fostering both academic and social emotional growth in every child. We're confident that she will be a valuable addition to our school community and an excellent teacher for our youngest learners. I present Annie Brimmer.
Hi, thank you.
Welcome, Annie. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Um, as we always ask our candidates, what brings you to Swartz Creek?
Um, well, a big reason would be Ms. Bevel, just because the past working with her, and then the opportunity to start my teaching career under someone that I enjoyed working with. Felt like a good call. And then another big reason would be, in my interview process, I asked like what they liked about Swartz Creek, and their answer unanimously was that they, that there is a big emphasis on family, that, that you care for the families here, but also that like, within the school buildings, within everything, like you're pushing that, just caring for each other like a family should. So that was a big push for me.
Anything else you'd like us to know about you?
I, I don't know.
No?
All right. No pressure.
I appreciate you guys, though.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we hire Ms. Annie Brimmer for the elementary position at
Thank you, Chuck. Support Andrea. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment of Annie Brimmer, kindergarten teacher at Sirene Elementary as presented. And Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Carrie Germain?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Yes, of course.
Six yeses.
Motion passes. Welcome and congratulations.
And at this time, Ms. Damon, if you'd please come forward. If we could have Melissa Graves come with you, please.
So I get the pleasure tonight of introducing Melissa Graves. We selected her in the interview process for our special education English resource room vacancy when Mr. Suede left us for games. We're a little sad still, but we are glad to have a, a equally as good candidate, we hope, that loves our school as much as he did. And I think that she's well on her way already. She's been already kind of forming relationships with students in our building, and just kind of doing some things around just to learn the systems and what she's gonna step into. And she started at Swartz Creek, and I'm probably gonna get this wrong, how many years ago?
Back in ninety-nine.
So nineteen ninety-nine, she, this is where she started her teaching career, and then went into a lot of different paths with special education, and did a lot of different trainings in different locations, including like Elmeroff with the GIST, and then retired from education, like most do when they're eligible. And then she took her little break and then went to go work at Grand Blank. And then we were able to snag her up at Swartz Creek for this year, and that's where she's coming from. Most recently is Grand Blank.
Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you.
So I'll ask you the same question. Why did you choose Swartz Creek?
Um, I really loved working here for the year and a half that I did as a new teacher, fresh out of college. It was a great experience. But life took me in another direction and on another path. And I was glad when I saw the posting and that, you know, there was a position for me because I was, you know, it's always been someplace that I fondly remembered working at. I had a good relationship with my peers, and I have already made relationships with my current peers in the week that I've been here.
Where, where did you work at in ninety-nine? What building?
Sirene.
Oh, did you?
Anything else you'd like us to know?
Nothing I can think of.
We look forward to learning about you. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we hire Ms. Melissa Graves back to, to position as Swartz Creek school teacher, instead of her at the high school now.
Support.
So you went from big extremes, elementary to high school.
Seven to twenty-six.
So I'm, I'm gonna give this one to Andrea. Kim, you can be next. Chuck, and then Andrea, any comments or questions?
For the last seven years, very technical. I have.
Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment of Melissa Graves, special education teacher at Swartz Creek High School as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Carrie Germain?
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Of course.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Six yeses. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Make a motion, we take a five-minute recess.
I, I don't think I need a second on that, do I? All right, all right. We are going to take a five-minute, we're gonna take board time, five-minute break. All right, all right, we are going to take a five-minute, we're gonna take a board time, five-minute break. We will return to our meeting agenda. Okay, um, prior to the approval of our teachers, and congratulations to our new teachers and to the district, um, we continue to, um, be able to approve amazing talent. I would like to go back to eleven C, the first reading of TRU policy updates for June and July twenty-five. Okay, all right, any comments or questions? This is our first reading, so we will be revisiting these. Not hearing any right now.
Well, just the one that kind of hit earlier, so we'll look into that.
Yes.
Now you gotta go through and, look, in here. Nope, forget them now, if you've got one. I mean, if you've got it now.
Well, the one is very simple, our policy, uh, twenty-three oh three.
Twenty-three oh three?
Yeah, it's at the top of there. So it's just change, uh, to the president, vice president, plus. They called it the Congress of the Last Page. And, um, that's a, that's a A.
Okay.
Twenty-three oh three, and A three, um, and I want that letter added, that the superintendent or administrator will not, um, or have any part of the investigation involving a board member, until the investigation is complete and presented to the board. And the only reason I want to add is, um, I think Jim got something, so that I don't make any trouble.
And Ken, I would, I would disagree, leaving out the administrators if they have information or are interviewed as a part of the investigation.
Opening.
Being part of the investigation.
It just says will not be involved or have any part of the investigation involving a board member. And that would include an interview, am I right?
So say investigating?
No, because Jim is investigating, he was asked to submit an email to TRU. So.
So that's something we need to talk about and figure out a language. We're not making these policy tonight.
No.
Okay.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't be having a part. It's not a, if they're- If you pick, if you pick to choose your words, the intent is they are not involved in the investigations, if you go all the way down, part of the investigations handled by the president or the vice president. I think you spin off that comment to the next one, doesn't mean they can't be interviewed, obviously, everyone, everyone in this committee works, can be interviewed. Anyone can interview this investigation. I'm talking about when you're submitting it.
Opening it.
Or you can't have an administrator or superintendent, or they go interview people. It is the duty of either the president or the vice president, that's what I'm getting at. It's not, no one else should be doing the investigation, not that they can't be interviewed.
You have that.
Well, yeah, it has to go to the lawyer anyways, for fine tuning, so they might-
Right.
They might reword it, so, thank you. And that's what I'm saying, I'd rather see them now, so we can fine tune these now before next month.
Then thirty-two oh, policy thirty-two oh nine, credit cards, uh, really simple, remove the word destiny from every, uh, uh, from each part of the policy, changing from five percent to three percent, an opening paragraph on the total value that can be spent, right now we're two and a half million dollars, we can spend that credit card usage, I think that's a tad, and you know the budget's only a little long. We might lock the board P team for all thirty-eight, thirty-nine, right now we're fifty-one, though. So unless you think the budget's gonna come down dramatically in the next few years, I think that's fine. Um, then the list of the following positions, I do wanna add, if you guys can add, um, maybe have, uh, I don't know, I think right now we have a whole lot, like five, uh, five cards available for professionals developed, also known as TRU. So if you wanna add that, I, I love that, um, and I think that group of people right there should be sufficient, where anybody that needs access to a card should be able to find their building trust. And if they can, I guess, call over, talk to Dave or Cheryl.
Can I just give a quick comment on this?
Sure.
We have reduced them, you know, thirty percent, so we started at fifty-one, we're down to thirty-eight currently, eleven of those cards are actually PD, they're a hundred dollar balances that we give, so we don't have to do reimbursements, they're locked up here. Yeah, yeah, all right. And then we, so that puts us at twenty-seven total, what you're proposing here is fifteen total, which takes us from twenty-seven to fifteen. I guess some of the people that aren't on the list, I would wonder about, the executive director of technology, the director of operations, should they have one?
Bill and Travis.
Yeah, Bill and Travis. Um, Amazon, we have an Amazon card because-
A loader.
Yeah, a loader needs one.
Yeah, Travis and a loader to, um, Amazon, that's been huge for our teachers with efficiency, for us to be able to use a card to purchase directly from Amazon. Robotics currently has one, I guess they can find the building one. Our head mechanic, for example, would, would be important, and then the executive director of student services would be, unless that's counted as a principal or, tho- those are just some that I would strongly encourage.
Not Rich, you just, is that who you just said? Were you referring to Michelle?
I said Bill, and then, then our head mechanic.
Yeah, he can get it from Bill. Did you say Michelle, or no?
Uh, Billby? No.
No, no, no.
Paul?
Right, okay.
She's, uh, she's already on here.
Are the thirty-eight-
Oh, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Are the thirty-eight credit cards, does that include the Amazon cards?
Um, yes.
And how many Amazon cards are out at the district?
Just one.
Okay, so they all use the same, all the school buildings use the same card?
Yeah, well, that card is in our building.
Yeah, but they, they just probably go online and use that number, all that's already pre-plugged in.
Yeah.
Well, the, the Amazon cards, sometimes fifty thousand dollars a month. I see on the bills, I don't, just, I'm just asking.
That's probably our, our biggest card.
Yeah, 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 I, I want him to know, because I'm bringing him up to speed.
You know, I even would agree with some of these cards have the value increased up, because we're obviously gonna ask other people, for instance, Michelle or Jamie, obviously, hypothetically, their card's a ten grand right now, maybe the card should go up fifty grand. The, the, the dollar threshold is not my issue, it's my issue, it's how many are out there. You know, it's like when we're at our committee meeting, I, I mean, kind of, if you had ten kids, are you gonna give all your kids a credit card with, with a thousand dollar limit? Well, there's not one family here that said they're gonna do that. You might send one to college for it, but I mean, you just, you can't turn everybody loose, that wasn't the intent that we're getting back, two thousand, whatever.
So I have twenty people, I have twenty, based off the list, the five, then Bill and Travis. And then we've got two, two at a, two at a thousand and nine at a hundred that are here, other than, okay.
It's just a way to say, I think we've increased the tremendous.
There's just people on here that, I, I don't know why they had a credit card, and we had eleven up here that basically sat here and did nothing, because you had the building principals using their credit card when they went on PDs, well, that was part of the excuse of why we needed the eleven. But that was part of the reason why we need the second one in the school, because the building principal might take theirs. We talked in a circle, when Jamie and I had this conversation, was, it was, we just kept going around and around. We needed a second one in the school, because the building principal might take hers or his, but yet we needed eleven for PD, in case the building principal or someone went someplace. It makes no, it made no sense. You know, and then we had even more ridiculous conversation in reference to someone needs something at the last minute. I would like to think that everybody's, that is teaching that is gonna have to purchase something, has that well planned out. And I don't, like I said, if they need to borrow the building principal's card, but have at it.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else?
All right, I have this one concern, I heard you say you're gonna read it twice. So are we back to reading?
We have an entire package to go through, not one policy.
Okay, let me refer you back to January. And you guys read something one time, and I asked you, how, how many times are we gonna reread a policy change? And you, some of you individuals here said, well, that's not a policy, we don't have to read it to, now I just said you're gonna have to read it to-
And you, some of you individuals here said, well, that's not a policy, we don't have to read it to, now I just said you're gonna have to read it to. So what is going to be our policy on changing policies? Are we reading it once, or are we reading it twice? That, you weren't here in January.
Well, there was a big argument, because they, they did a social media policy, and they read it one time, and then they said, that's, that's, that's the way it is. And I beefed it then, because we always did it for two times for the six and a half years I've been here. And then we went to one, and now we're back to two.
So we, we went to one, two, one reading for a brand new policy that was submitted and sent to TRU for approval. I don't recall any other instance.
Well, I can recall, we can go back to the tape, and there was a big argument, and it was never presented in January's meeting, you guys passed it in February, and then you told me, oh, we, we talked about it in January, it might have been talked at policy committee. Alls I'm saying, I don't care which way we do it, I want something that's consistent for this board, are we gonna read it twice, or are we gonna read it once? I prefer twice, that way it gives us time to, to review it more. And they, you guys did that one, that was a social media policy, um, so the board members didn't talk online or something, I don't know, not on Facebook, so I don't know.
I may have to go back and watch the meeting.
You, you go ahead.
Yeah, because we brought it to one, and then approved it at the second one.
That's, that's disproving.
So, so this, these are our annual updates, correct, Dave, and then we'll have any others that come to us from TRU periodically?
I'm okay, can we just say we're gonna start doing it twice every time?
We gotta vote on it.
I think, I think we gotta look, I believe, and I won't swear to this one, because I don't have it in front of me, I believe it's in our board policies that the policies have to be read, read twice, but I won't, hold me to that one.
Okay, so let's just read them twice.
Perfect.
Alright, everybody okay with that? Alright, but I'm gonna hold everybody sitting here at this table to actually look at the policies. Okay, because once we've approved them, we're not going back and changing this one or that one or the wording of this. Our job as board members is to actually look at these.
And when we read it next month, at the second time, we're also voting on it at that point.
And if you have issues or questions, bring them to Andrea, as our chair of our policy committee.
That's the whole idea.
She can consult with Dave if there are questions we have to get clarification on, alright?
Uh, yes, all except the fact is, policies are living documents.
They're always gonna change.
As time changes and laws change, policies have to change. So we may adopt something, and, and then if TRU gives us something six months later, or a year later, are we gonna tell them, well, we're not changing that? They're, they're living documents, they have to change with the times. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, if you're saying one week, we bring it back. I brought this to policy and procedures and got totally shut down, I asked for, at the last meeting, I asked for this to be brought, put on the agenda, it's not on the agenda. So I don't know how many times I'm gonna be ignored, that's why this always turns into a hot mess, because I asked, and no one put it on here.
What's this?
Huh?
What you just did here?
Yeah.
It's part of the policy reading, like, these are changes to the policy we're reading now.
I asked for this to be put on the agenda, because it wasn't changed in policy on the day I was there. It got shut down.
For this to be on.
For this, yes.
But why doesn't it fall under what we're doing right now? Like, we're reading the policy, this is part of the policy, or are these different?
I, I guess, not to make an argument, I asked for the third thing too, and it's not.
So I'll say it again, if you have changes, if you read the packet, you have changes, please send them to Andrea, correct Andrea?
Right, so I can go say, let's send the lawyers.
Okay.
But they've gotta be submitted by the next, before the next meeting, so we're gonna run it by the attorney.
The next one's not a policy, I asked for three things to be put on the agenda, I didn't know we were doing this, I don't know what the agenda looks like, two weeks out.
That's what I'm saying, doesn't, wouldn't you consider this policy, I'm just asking?
No.
Okay.
Not under the set of circumstances, no.
Okay.
Okay, so next month, Dave, will be our second read, and if there were any others that came forward at that time from TRU, we would get these. Okay, alright, next on our agenda, we have the approval of the boosters P T O organizations. Any questions from board before I entertain a motion, there's a ninety-one page document that was in our packet. From various organizations representing our students and, and buildings, parents.
I scanned it, Carrie, now I, I will make a motion, just to ask Jim or David, that these are in line with last year's, um, because I know we approve these every year. And has there been any major changes? Because here's the fine print, I mean, I didn't read them, every one of them, I can't even read them without my magnifying glass. Yeah, that, that, that's all I'm asking, David, or Jim, to either one of you, Sue might know.
No, there's no, they're all the same.
Yeah, okay.
All the same groups, all, they all got their paperwork in.
I make a motion that we approve all of our, um, boosters as presented on our sheet, here for the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar year.
There's support?
Support.
Thanks, Ken. Any comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the following booster P T O organizations. Schwartz Creek Athletic Boosters, Schwartz Creek Youth Basketball, Schwartz Creek Youth Baseball, Youth Football, Youth Softball, Youth Wrestling, Bowling, Cheer Program. Performing Arts, Archery, Band, Dragons, Lacrosse, Youth, uh, P T O, of course, Deacon Siree, Moorish Elementary, sorry, Moorish Elms P T O. Gaines P T O, Schwartz Creek Middle School P T O, High School P T O, and Class of twenty-twenty-six P T S O as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Andrea Fick? Sorry, Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Chuck Malkey?
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine?
Yes.
In the middle of it, I just asked Andrew who supported, or who supported, I couldn't hear, thank you.
Kim, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, motion passes, thank you, and thanks to all of our boosters and P T O organizations for all that they do to support our families and students. Okay.
I have a question, I'm just, eh, I don't know, parking for P T O events. Okay, um, when they do the morning stuff, it's backing up the car line, or that's what I've seen out there. Um, is there a space that can be designated for that, so they're not using the car, the, the pickoff, drop-off line?
Yes, so the, the good news is, we have great participation at those events, are you talking about any building in particular?
Well, the one I saw was Elm's.
Elm's.
Yeah, I don't know if there's additional parking, or if they can specify that you need to have a park, that you need to park in a space, or, I don't know, just so it doesn't hold up the car line.
That's our most challenge right now, with, um, the turn lanes and parking. Um, I, I think we can look, we can definitely look at that and see, make some recommendations, I know we have the big bus, um, drive now that could be used for parking, we even have the, the grass, so they can park some on the grass, we can look at that.
Yeah, just sort of, yeah. Car lines are crazy, isn't it? And I know it's only a couple times a year, but just, you know, yeah.
Okay, are we good? Alright, next, we have the approval of treasurer selection and committee chairs. We have had resignation from our board, Alyssa Bouchard unfortunately has resigned from the board, which leaves an opening. Uh, that opening has been posted, and the deadline for submission is the twenty-sixth, Friday, the twenty-sixth. And, um, you can send your interest and your resumes to Ms. Gould, that's been posted. As a result, uh, she was treasurer, um, and we want to thank her for her service. Um, she was an incredible board member, uh, she's continuing to serve the community in different ways, and I encourage her to do so, and much luck to her and her family. So, um, next on the agenda, we have the approval of treasurer selection and committee chairs. As a result of her departure, the committees are finance and bond chair. And let me just mention, there's nothing that requires a treasurer to be over those areas, but that's how it was, um, when Alyssa was serving, so.
I would wanna table this until we get our new board member, but that's with me.
I think that, that, I think maybe we could do that too.
I'm just saying.
So, so I'm here.
I'm here, I'm here.
You know what, Carrie, to expedite this, and we can wait for Ken's decision, if he does it, I'll temporarily take treasurer just for next month at the beginning, because I co-chaired it for the last seven years. And, uh, I kinda forced Alyssa to take the bond committee, because I was in charge of building and operations, I'll, I'll take over bond, and then when the new board member comes on, we can have that discussion and vote then, because maybe the new board member would like to do it, or maybe not.
So I, I just wanna clarify, Chuck, you're talking about, um, temporarily chairing the, um, finance committee and the bond committee?
Yes, I, yeah, yeah, just, yeah, that, just for the next month or so, until we can, you know, let the new person come in and get their feet wet, and then we can, I think we can make a decision then, for, you know, help. The thing we wanna do, it might be somebody overqualified, so why don't we just do that for the time being, and then not have that discussion here, that's okay with the rest of my fellow members.
Is there anybody who has a burning desire to want to chair those committees? I, I, I did it this week, and it's another two, um, sets of minutes to do it.
My notes will not be as neat as yours for the finance.
Alright, so I, I hear a motion to that we delay the selection of a treasurer until our, um, our open position is filled. And, uh, I also hear that Mr. Malkey is willing to serve in capacity of finance chair and bond chair. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion.
So, so, uh, support. If support, you have, Autumn, you have Autumn on motion. And Andrea, okay, any comments or questions? Hearing none, be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Board of Education approves as the finance chair temporarily, and as the new bond chair temporarily in place.
Can't authorize it.
Alyssa Bouchard, be careful, who resigned on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Chuck Malkey?
Thanks a lot, Kim, yes, I was hoping you'd all vote, no.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine?
Absolutely. Is that everybody, Sue?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, Chuck, for your willingness to serve in a temporary capacity, we'll make sure that's in there. Alright, uh, next on the agenda, we have public comments. Anybody wanna address the board, please come forward, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hi, I just have two quick things, Michelle Corbett, first, um, on the break, my husband texted, he can't hear all of you, so can you guys make sure your mics are on, and that you're talking into your mics? And then second, just wanna thank the high school, um, team, they, class of nineteen eighty-five, dating myself, fortieth reunion is this Saturday. And they're gonna come to the homecoming game, they're gonna be, um, at the parade, and the high school admin team is gonna give them a tour of the high school Saturday, and they are really, really geeked about it, so I wanted to thank them for that, that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else?
Hi, I'll be quick, um, Erin Boggs of my high school, special education teacher, and I just wanted to tell you guys a little bit about some of the things that we have going on at the high school. Um, many communities are expressing interest in going back to the days of having shop class, home ec, and high school. Here at Schwartz Creek, we are fortunate to have brought back those life skills opportunities in the form of personal living and construction trades. In personal living, students gain familiarity with skills such as sewing, car maintenance, cooking, and grocery shopping on a budget. In construction trades, students learn woodworking and apply math to real world, to the real world, when they design projects. At the more advanced level, they're able to get even more in-depth, learning valuable skills that will give them a leg up, whether they intend to enter trades or just want to be a responsible homeowner. Thanks to the bond that passed by our community, our construction program has the space to make large projects a reality, and run power tools in a safe environment. In addition to these programs, students also have access to dragon design, a class designed to build employment readiness skills for students with disabilities. In dragon design, students learn how to create products such as hats and shirts using vinyl and heat presses. These classes not only develop technical and creative abilities, but also foster teamwork, responsibility, and workplace readiness, helping students prepare for future employment opportunities. You have, may have seen their work last year, oh, I'm their teacher of that class, and we made shirts for the board last year, so you guys may have received those. Um, our dragons who engage with these programs leave high school more confident in the ability to handle life after graduation. It's incredibly rewarding seeing these kids realize their own capabilities, and we're grateful to the board and our community for recognizing the importance of fostering life skills in our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, well, hold on, is there, is there gonna be orders, because I still like my shirt, it was gray with black.
I, if I can still find the design, otherwise, you, you might have to get a different one.
I wear it at the gym all the time, thank you.
Alright.
So, so would it be possible? I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm sorry, I wanted an order.
We love having students here, and if it's possible, or it fits into our schedule, would it be possible to have some students at a meeting in the future?
Definitely try, transportation can sometimes be a barrier for my students, I teach, um, in the self-contained classroom, so I have the most severely disabled students, so on top of, you know, they're already complicated situations.
That's okay, that's all right, and so, and so just, let them know we appreciated the shirts.
They really enjoyed making them for you guys.
Yes, yes, we should wear our shirts from January, we're meeting.
They can print their names on them, maybe next time on the back, would that be okay?
Maybe.
Then it would be a surprise.
At least we'd be wearing their shirt, I wear mine at the gym, and it's a good shirt.
But thank you, and please let them know we, we appreciated it, and we appreciate your, your, uh, sharing with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, so my name is Jennifer Staaten, I am a Schwartz Creek taxpayer. I just wanted to go over a couple of things, I didn't know if some of you are made aware, I learned something very troubling today. I was made aware that the city of Schwartz Creek has made a ordinance that does not allow homeless people or vagrants to be in the city limits. Walking around on your streets, sitting down on a bench, public property, um, that's a little bit of a First Amendment right. And, um, you've made comments here at the board before, that you have a lot of students, there was a comment made here tonight, about the fact that they give out gas carts to people, to get their kids back and forth to school. Some of those people are homeless, and they actually live in their car. So I'd like to ask the board here, and I have other things I'm gonna talk about, but were any of you aware of that? Did you know that was recently passed by the city of Schwartz Creek? That should be a concern. That means they could just literally come in and swoop one of your students in off of the street, because he says I'm homeless. That's a big concern, and I, I wanted to point that out to you, I didn't know if you knew, but you need to know, if you don't know, you need to know. Another thing I wanna point out to you is, there's a teacher that recently passed away from Schwartz Creek, his name was Mr. Ben. I had Mr. Ben in the middle school, and I didn't hear anybody up here say anything nice, or even make a condolence, or ask for a moment of silence for him and his family. Mr. Ben was a teacher here at Schwartz Creek for so many years, I think some of these people that I hear in the back even recognize that name. So I just wanted to point that out to you. That should have been something that you should have took a moment of silence for at the beginning of the meeting, and it was posted, it's been all over Facebook, it's been online, it's in a lot of the newspapers, it was very prevalent. And Mr. Ben was a great teacher. Another thing I wanna point out to the board, and I know. Another thing I want to point out to the board, and I know I'm getting short on my time, but we talked about, or I say, we, you all talked about this attendance task force. And I get it, and you think they're doing good things, but I heard a lot about what they do and, and how they help and the programs and the services, but I didn't hear how they're helping the kids make sure they're getting to school every day. It was more about the programs than, like you said, I get a pop and a chip because I come to school every day and I'm making more of an effort, but you asked about getting a certificate to people that potentially come to school all year long. Maybe you should make an exception and offer them the opportunity, if you have two excused absences, medical excuses, that you could still get your certificate. At least maybe they'd be getting the same stimulation that they're getting from the chips and the pop to say, hey, you know, at least we're doing something right, too. You can't give one something and not give the others that are doing the right thing all the time, nothing. I just wanted to point a lot of those things out to you.
I, I'm just going to ask my fellow board members, were you aware of Mr. Ben?
I was not either.
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
All right. Anyone else?
I'm going to be quick because we're late. You guys are educators. This is simple, simple math right here. Just get into the Bill of Rights for the love of God. Stop making me look smart. Also, fire your attorney. He's a moron. I'll shred him. I barely graduated. It's embarrassing. The stuff that he has you doing is violations of the first, fourteenth, fourth, possibly eighth amendments? That's opening yourself up to civil liability lawsuits. You know, like, a student don't come to school, so we just immediately, you know what I mean, start getting the police involved and CPS and such? Come on, man, that. I, I'm telling you right now, if somebody called me for that situation, it'd be bad news for this school. I can just promise you that, so. Learn your amendments and then start checking your attorneys. This is not rocket science. I mean, the First Amendment, freedom of religion, assembly, press, petition, speech. Come on, man, stop making this kindergarten stuff. You guys are all educated. You went to college. I barely graduated with a one point six oh seven and went in Marine Corps infantry. I am not a book-smart dude. This is not rocket science. You can go through the whole entire first, just fourteen, just go through the first fourteen amendments, the, the, the human rights amendments. You'll be done in ten minutes. You guys probably be done in five minutes. Takes me ten, twelve minutes to read it, for the love of God. Get, get involved yourself. Quit depending on your moron attorneys. Look what we learned during COVID. Should we just blindly trust doctors? Don't think so. Results are in. Come on, guys, do better.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening, good night. I'm, I'm Brienne Wilson. I'm the president of the Schwartz Creek Education Association. The SCEA is what the community would know as the teachers' union, although our membership includes non-classroom certified staff such as counselors, social workers, and instructional coaches, as well as traditional classroom teachers. I've spoken previously during public comment from my individual perspective, but I speak tonight in my capacity as president, representing the vast majority of certified staff in the district. That's why I actually have a paper that I'm talking of tonight. It's been brought to my attention that there's some degree of confusion about what the SCEA stands for, so I'm here to clarify what positions the SCEA does and does not hold. This is just for clarification for the entire community. First, the issues that the SCEA takes no position on. We take no position on the sale of Moorish or the megasite, and we take no position on board investigations, internal or external. That's board business. We recognize and respect that these are issues many community members are very passionate about, and the individual staff members may have very strong opinions. However, as a group, we do not advocate for any specific outcome or process related to those topics. We do ask that such business be conducted transparently, respectfully, and efficiently, as it does take significant time and resources. Chuck mentioned before how we have these committees that have developed, and, and I think that's been a very good move to move that away from our general board meetings. The presence of teachers at recent board meetings has caused some people to wonder, why are the teachers here? My response to that is we should have been here all along. Decisions that impact our working conditions and student learning conditions are made in this room. The SCEA has simple expectations. One is that the decisions impacting daily life in our schools be made after consulting relevant educators. Tonight was a great example of that. When we had questions, some people that worked in our district buildings were called up and asked, hey, can you give some more insight to this? That was fantastic. That's exactly what we'd like to see. And also that the leaders in our district not only serve as models of respectful discourse, but also insist on respectful disagreement within meetings. Again, tonight's been really great. It's been a positive crowd. People have disagreed, but done so respectfully, and that's what we want to see. We have no gotchas or secret agendas. We don't have any intention or desire to influence decisions that are board business alone. We have enough to do. We merely want our experience, our expertise to be considered when relevant decisions are being made, and for all stakeholders to remember how essential, essential it is for our students to see reactions to disagreement and conflict that we can be proud of, because the students are watching the adults around them, including at board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Brienne.
Hi, Hadley Nesta Housky, Schwartz Creek alumni. I just want to thank, oh, you're okay. I just want to thank you guys. You guys actually acted like a board tonight, and over the last, you know, nine months now that we're in, that was really impressive and meant a lot to the people who have been embarrassed, to the teachers. Thank you, guys, for everything you do. I know you guys have a lot on your plate, but you guys are amazing. To everyone here that shows up and supports the boards and supports the teachers, your support means a lot, and more than anyone can say, and thank you. So thank you just for focusing back to the kids tonight, and like Ms. Paul said tonight in her presentation, things take time in order to change. They're not going to change overnight. We're not going to wake up tomorrow, and everyone's going to show up to school. So give it time, let it implement, let these kids become better. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just real quick on attendance and what we've been talking about tonight, this is a memorandum from two thousand twenty-four from Rodney Heatherton, to, it's addressed to four members of the high school administration. It says, "The high school administration through one hundred and thirteen student days for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four has been absent seventy-three times for a total of fifty-five and a half full days of school. The breakdown for those numbers is as follows. Chantel Manning, nineteen entries for a total of one hundred and forty-four hours." This is in one hundred and thirteen student days. Adrian T., sixteen entries for a total of one hundred and twenty-four hours. Steve Clark, eighteen entries for a total of one hundred and thirteen hours. Heather Briggs, twenty entries for a total of sixty-three hours. The yearly cost for the high school administration and salary and benefits alone is six hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. To sustain such costs, the entire team should be in place on ninety to a hundred percent of student days. The current seventy-three entries out of the one hundred and thirteen days represents thirty-two percent of the time. So here we are talking about we can't get our kids to school, but we also can't get our administration to school. And I'm a firm believer in lead by example. I think we should see how these administrators, how these administrators are doing today and this year, last year, and see if this is still a trend. And if it is, I think we should, it should be addressed, so they should, they should lead better. Thanks.
Jamie Demmon, high school principal, and I'm glad that I get to go after that comment, because I guess what I want to say today is that it would be really nice if the administrators that are in place in the building now don't have to keep combating data that is old data. That is not us. That is not my attendance. That is not my team's attendance. We've done a really good job at that. We pride ourselves at being in the building as much as possible. In fact, I would say my boss would probably say, I push back against him more than he probably wants me to about not coming to meetings, because I feel like it's important for me to be at the building when the kids are there. So between test score data, that's not something that I could control years ago when I wasn't there and when I wasn't in charge. So if we could just start looking at relevant data, you guys voted our team in last year, last July, a year from July, you know, a year ago, July. So just keep that in mind. You were excited then to have us there. I think everything that we have looked at since we've taken over, all of our data has improved. We've shown that in multiple presentations. That doesn't seem to be coming across for some reason, and it's super disheartening for the people who are in that building working hard every day. And we're trying to disprove the things that are being said here that, in my opinion, aren't true of the current administration and the current building climate. So I would just like to do that. The other piece, I know you guys are making a lot of decisions about credit cards. Whether I disagree or agree isn't the matter, but I'm the building principal. Now I have a card that has my name on it, and you want me to give that to a hundred and some employees? Nope. So it has my name. Now I'm going to have to go out of the building. Every single time, that needs to be swiped. My suggestion, put one that says Schwartz Creek High School. I can still be the keeper of it, but then I feel more comfortable giving that to a Schwartz Creek High School employee. I don't feel comfortable giving my Jamie Demmon Schwartz Creek credit card to anyone, quite frankly, because I'm going to be held accountable for what gets swiped on there. I want to be able to answer to you guys what's being swiped. So my thing to the staff has been, I have to come with you. I have to meet you wherever we're going. I have to do the things. Or I have to be the one that puts it in the credit card on the computer. So just something to think about when you guys are making decisions. I don't mind holding the credit card. I know that's my role as the building principal. I just wish it wasn't necessarily in my name if I'm going to be responsible to give that to everybody. So those are my, one more thing, if I'm still in my time. I just want to disprove the whole chips and pop comment, because that did not land right. We have a currency, like a school currency system. It's called PBIS. We could do a whole presentation on it if we wanted, but it's just a pillar through the MTSS process that the state has us doing. Part of that is they get tickets. We call them target tickets. That acts as money. So our high school kids get to work with me and the instructional coach, and we get to come up with prizes for our school store, which they use their fake money, their target tickets, to buy the things that they want. Our kids like chips and pop. They pick that often, so that's what we kind of have for them. But they give us other ideas, too, like different parking spots and bigger items, too, that they can work toward. So those are it.
Thank you, Jamie.
Hi, I'm Brian Jones. I'm one of the Schwartz Creek district residents. First off, I'd like to say the, the revisions to your, your notes, the, these are, these are documents that go out. These are legal documents, I believe. You, just because you don't like what's said there, you get to say you don't like what's said there. You don't get to say, cut out what Jim Kitchen said. That's not how that works. And, and the board should know that. That shouldn't, you know, Ms. Gould over there was confused because it didn't make any sense. You're just like, I don't want this to be there. Then you get to make a, your, your voice known. That also goes in there. But, but you don't, you don't amend unless there's some kind of error. You know, if I said Mr. Kitchen's wearing a white, blue suit, and that went in there, we said, no, no, we looked at the thing, it's gray. Then, then you amend it. Otherwise, you add your two cents, and what he said stands. Those are the comments he made. And he said he stands by them. You don't just cross them out because you don't agree. You just say, I don't agree. There's that. The other thing, the other thing that I'm here for that brought me here, and I get a little passionate about this, so, sorry. I, I didn't keep up with the board meetings. And, and I saw at one point that we wanted to get rid, we wanted to get rid of school of choice. That math doesn't math. You were given data, and I, I hope that's moot point now. I hope it's gone. But what, what I will tell you, today we talked about attendance, and, and you say, oh, man, I'm glad, I'm glad we can, you know, get these kids here, and we need to get them here, and let's hire a couple new teachers. But just a couple meetings ago, or last meeting or whatever, Mr. Melkey here said, those teachers can go to wherever and get a job, because we got to cut fifty of them. What do you think that does to these people? You just welcomed two new teachers here tonight. What do you think you're going to do with those fifty teachers? Why would somebody come here? That's not, that's not recruitment and retention. That's not good. You don't do that. So I guess also with the attendance, some of these kids might be on the rocky edge, and you said, well, hell, we don't want them anyway. So there you go. I wouldn't come. I wouldn't come if I wasn't wanted. So things, words have consequences, and, and you need to think real hard about what you do before you do them. The other point that I want to get to real quick that, that somebody brought up had to do with the city of Schwartz Creek, and I think we've got to a Schwartz Creek's finest out here. I, I blew up Mr. Kitchen's phone about the, their sign and their, their agreement with ICE. I'll tell you right now, I was not happy with that. I think that the school needs to really rethink their, their relationship with Chief Bade and the department. I believe that, that, I mean, Chief Bade went on, on the news that anybody can look, you can look it up wherever, and said that, you know, he just wanted tools to be allowed to, you know, arrest immigrants if they committed a crime. He can already do that. I, I know. I was a police officer. He was a police officer. He'll tell you. Anybody that's walking around here, you can be arrested for a crime. So I feel like that was a little disingenuous. He just wants to, I, I don't know what he wants to do. And, and I don't care if these guys go and tell him. I've talked to him before many times. I mean, like I said, I was a cop. I'll call it out. If they're not going to act right, I'll let them know. So that's my, that's my piece here. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda. I'm a parent of two students in Schwartz Creek. Ken brought up the Walker and the bus route thing. I was personally affected by that for nine years straight. And let me tell you, it is ridiculous. I live on South Dy road. The bus doesn't come down there for any of the students in the subdivision, but they do for the trailer park kids. I live four driveways down, and I asked, can my son just walk down there and get on the bus? I was told no. Also, with my daughter before that. So from kindergarten until, was it last year? I was dropping a kid off every day, had to change my work schedule. My husband works for FedEx and goes in at four AM. Like, it's, it is ridiculous. We all pay the same taxes to have access to the same transportation. My second point is, are you guys aware, because I did not hear it brought up in last board meeting, that the Michigan Association of School Boards actually will help you find a new person without actually having to pay ten to twenty-five thousand dollars? I didn't hear that get brought up last time.
We did discuss that at the meeting I was at last Thursday at the Genesee County Association of School Board Member. And they made a recommendation, but we had already chose, we had already made our choice and chose somebody. So we did discuss it there, because there's some, another district, I believe, that is a couple other districts that are also looking for superintendents.
But again, it wasn't brought up previously, before publicly at all for us to know that. So it just looks like you guys were looking for a way to, like, spend money without looking for a free way to do it through the state of Michigan. At least to some parents.
It was an open meeting.
At our previous meeting, a special board meeting, we had four superintendent search companies come and present to us.
That's what I'm talking about. You guys didn't mention anything about that M A S B being free. You guys only talked about those ones and the cost of those four companies, from what I understood.
They were here that day, the M A S B was, and they do have a fee. It's not as much as the other one, but they did have a.
Okay, then I must have misread their website. I apologize. My third and biggest issue I have right now is, I can tell you right now why we're considering school of choice to leave Schwartz Creek. Both of my children have been touched, groped, slapped by multiple students, specifically in middle school. My daughter got grabbed by the face in the lunchroom, and the solution for that was mediation, even though she was just standing there minding her own business. And the mediation led to whoever was in charge at the time telling me, well, I'm sorry, but he just didn't take his medication this, today. And that was it. That's all I got. This is the only explanation I got for that. Then the next year, my daughter got grabbed on the bus. Then the next year, my daughter got grabbed on the, I don't know how many times, by different boys. And then in eighth grade, one of the students threatened to rape her in the lunchroom in front of ten other students. And it took three days for the principal to call me back and even address it. And when he did call me back, he had no idea what was going on. I'm still furious about that. My son came home today and told me that someone grabbed him by the face at school. I've instructed my children that the school doesn't protect them, because by example, they have not yet to this day. So if you guys are looking for reasons why bullying is a problem, and my kids aren't getting bullied, they're getting slapped, pushed, shoved. And it wasn't just like he slapped him on the shoulder. He grabbed him by the forehead and shoved him back three feet. Where are the adults? You know, like when they go to an adult, nothing gets done about it. The kid that threatened to rape my daughter in front of ten other students, and they all testified that they heard him say it, was in class the next day. And he was in three of her classes that year. And when I asked to move her, she was like, "Well, I don't wanna leave my friends." But they wouldn't move him either. And so she still, to this day, has classes with this student, who never missed a single day of school, who no one ever called me to tell me, "What are the procedures for threats like this?" Because there's threats of violence, right? But what about the girls? These boys are very handsy. When that happened, I was told by whoever the principal was at the time, "Well, I know that it was a boy this time, but you know, these girls are, it's like pulling Velcro apart." My daughter wasn't attacked by a female student, so why are we making that correlation right now? I wanna know what the procedure is for bodily threats of harm against students? And can we be consistent with that?
Sorry, sorry.
That's all I have to say.
No, thank you, thank you. And I'm sorry that you've experienced that. No, no, I just wanna suggest that you follow up with Mr. Kitchen.
That's what we're gonna be done, though. That's my point. That's why I brought it up here. So that you guys can discuss amongst yourselves, sorry. So that you guys can discuss amongst yourselves what that should look like, because I never got a clear answer, and it's been three years.
So I would still suggest that you follow up with Mr. Kitchen.
I'm pretty sure he was the principal I spoke to at the time. I'm just saying, I'm not sure if it was you.
If you want to have a conversation, he's the most appropriate person, correct? Yes?
I don't like that answer.
I'm just saying, it's not the answer, because I've already done that, and nothing got solved. So I'm coming here now, as a parent, to the whole school board, because the principal, one person, didn't take care of it. I believe it was Jim Kitchen, but I can't remember.
Which building?
It was the middle school.
That was never principal.
Okay, well whoever it was, I know it wasn't Mr. Simonson, cuz he just came before. So I'm not sure who it was before that.
Please call me.
But I'm just saying, it's ridiculous. I even called the superintendent's office when it happened, and nothing was done.
All right, anyone else?
I just feel the need, Mallory Gullett. I feel the need to come up here and defend our city. We say there's two cops sitting out here. Has anyone asked them what their opinion is on what they've done in the city of Swartz Creek? Because everyone wants to be protected, but then when we put laws in place, we wanna be mad about the laws that are there to protect us. Police officers can always use their own judgment when they're approaching someone, if they feel like they're a danger to the kids, to the community or not. They're not gonna approach a child that looks homeless and yank them off the street. They're going to say, "Are you need help? Of course, if you're homeless, we need to help you." Not leave you on the street to be homeless, hoping you get to school every day in your car. So some of these ordinances that people wanna cut down, they need to be in place so that police officers that we put in place can then make their own smart decisions on who they need to approach that's walking around the street to be a danger to the rest of us and our other children that are walking around the street, that we don't want people walking around that are on drugs and drunk and stumbling, which I have witnessed downtown. So it is a problem, and it does need to be addressed. And these aren't the meetings to bring that up at.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jenny August. I just wanted to bring up again, I brought it up in policy. You're gonna be filling a board position, and I don't know that you guys have really flushed out exactly how you're gonna decide that, so that would be a good thing to figure out before that meeting, if possible. Cuz I know last time it ended up being a really long meeting, so I just figured I'd bring it up here too. The second thing I was gonna bring up was, I don't remember which of the committee meetings it was, but the credit cards came up, and I was speaking with one of the people that was in a school that had previously had a card, that no longer had a card. It was now the principal's card or whatever. One of the things that they expressed to me that I just wanted to share was that they were now struggling, because let's say there were like three cards in the building, the combined total credit limit for the building was like two thousand dollars. They're down to one card, and now their credit limit is down to like one thousand dollars. So that really was affecting what they were able to do. So I know that wasn't your intent to like totally cripple the budgets of particular schools. So just maybe make sure that as those number cards are adjusted, the credit limits are adjusted, just so that you're not hampering people's ability to do what they need to do. And the last thing I was gonna mention was, I love seeing the continuous improvement presentation. I work with data a lot, and setting goals and measuring goals and things like that. One of the things that kinda struck me, and it's not a criticism, it's just a comment. So the goals that seem to be set are based on county performance and state performance. So those are moving targets. The state could really tank, and now all of a sudden, we look great because the state tanked. Or the county did really awesome, and we did really awesome too, but we didn't quite get up to them. So it looks like we didn't meet our goal. So I would suggest maybe, you know, consider looking at like percent change. You know, we did twenty percent better this year. Or we do, you know, thirty percent better in three years, fifty percent better in five years. Just set like hard numbers, rather than comparing it to something that's moving target. Just because you do want to be able to recognize those successes, recognizing those efforts, and just because everybody else is doing different things, it shouldn't, you know, affect, you know, the, how we judge the success of our own programs and things like that. So that was just something like I said, as a data person that has to set goals and measure goals, that kinda stuck out at me. No criticism whatsoever, that's just something that I deal with a lot, so thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. And I just wanna say to that, before I make my comment, that those goals are set because they are, we have a very competitive staff. And when they look around the county, and I say, "We're gonna beat Grand Blank, we're gonna beat Goodrich, we're gonna beat Linden and Lake Fenton and Fenton." That means something to them. So it is both and. We've got those competitive goals, and even the high school was telling the kids when they were taking the test, you know, "We wanna beat everyone else in the Metro League on NWA." And that made a difference to the kids in taking it seriously and wanting to do their best. So the only reason I didn't bring you set goals with the scores is because with NWA being new, we wanna look at the data as a MyKIP team and then look at those. But I love what Jenny said, and if you would like to join our MyKIP team, we could probably use a really good data person, so. But what I wanted to come up here for, two things, well, three things, real quick. I just wanna clarify, the next Moresh Subcommittee meeting is on October 1st. And what time is it? Six o'clock. Okay, I just, cuz on the website it's six, and then in Chuck's, I think, something, you were talking about three, four, and five, but maybe I misheard that, I don't know. Oh, that's when you had all three. Okay, just making sure, because I heard other people in the audience kinda going, "What? What? When is the next meeting?" And I know a lot of people are here, cuz they wanna, you know, be there for that. TROON Policies, just in case you're not aware, which I think, or maybe have forgotten, in addition to policy, we have what's called administrative guidelines. And so some of the things that you're seeing kinda policies vague or whatever, if you dig a little deeper behind into the administrative guidelines, you might find more of that already spelled out, just to make your work easier for you. Cuz you can certainly, you know, adjust those guidelines to tell us administrators how you want your policies enacted, but you don't have to reinvent the wheel, cuz it's all in the TROON website there. And then the last part is, you know, not to take sides on anything, but I do appreciate what the gentleman said. You know, you guys obviously don't always all agree, and everyone says their piece. And Jim said his piece, and that was in the notes, and the notes are the notes. If we start revising those, I think that sets a dangerous precedent. Maybe next time, a board member makes a motion, says, "I didn't like that motion so-and-so made, and I didn't like the vote that we had," or whatever, and let's just strike that out of the notes, right? I mean, you can't, the notes are the notes. The meeting was the meeting. So I just think, I think it could set you guys up for a dangerous precedent that all of a sudden, we can be changing the notes.
Yeah, I just wanna add on. Okay. Those minutes, they're not official until we approve them up here? And that's what makes them official? Second, if things are untrue, and somebody reads it and recaps our meeting by reading our minutes, I don't want false information. We have problems with misinformation out there all the time, and pointing fingers all the time. I don't want it out there.
And I don't want misinformation out there either. All right. What I was saying is that we also, as administrators, don't want misinformation. So when board members say things that aren't true, can we say that and strike that?
Because it was proven that he lied to us.
I'm just saying, as a board, please consider what you're doing and the precedent that you're setting. Also, please consider that candidates for the superintendent, you're spending, oh, sorry, that's an opinion. You're spending a large sum of money to try to attract a really good superintendent. Superintendents are watching you and watching these meetings, and if they're going to have their comments struck from the notes, not be able to speak, have their free speech impinged upon, and if they're not going to be allowed to do their jobs because they're micromanaged on every other thing, I just, I'm really fearful of what kind of superintendent I'm gonna have as my boss. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'm Jessica. I'm from Monday Township.
I will not ask you to stop again. We have police officers who will escort you out if we have to interrupt our meeting again. Okay?
I would like to start my comments off for the public and to the staff. You guys are doing a stellar job. It is, it is something to, I have so tried to figure out what to and not to say. It, in the past months of figuring out in my head and my heart to listen and hear what happens in these board meetings and the committee meetings, it hurts my heart. It may, like, I feel emotionally sick at times about it, right? And it's my issue. And somebody just said something, and I so appreciate what you said about respectful discourse and how this meeting had gone up to this point, right? Like, I know that each of you are capable of showing up and engaging with each other better than what you have. And you know it, I'm certain too. And I'm telling you, as a resident, these people and our students and our staff deserve better, and they want better. And I think you do too. The crazy thing is, is that you allow fear and insecurity to rule. Like, we do that as humans, right? We get so insecure, and we think we're not gonna get our way. Behind anger, and I've seen so much anger on this board, behind anger is always fear. And I'm gonna ask you to each look and take responsibility for your actions, and when you misspeak. I sent an email in July to the board about misstatements that were made publicly. I still have not heard any type of apology to the people those misstatements were made about. You have a choice, and it's already been said here tonight. You have the opportunity to set an example, and we as residents really want you to set that example. As somebody else said it already, our students want you to set that example. And I'm certain that you are capable of it, because I've seen you do it before. I know what kind of heart you people have. I'd like for you to lead with it, please. Thank you a lot for letting me share.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hi, my name is Chris Hall. I'm a taxpayer in the community. I have three students in the district. My wife and I have volunteered for many years in various capacities in the district. I just, I had some prepared things to say, but I think it's important to hammer home what you were just saying. In a board, and when you have meeting minutes that you're approving, you're just approving whether they're accurate. Like he said, he's got a white tie or a blue tie. What she said is what she actually said. You don't just take things out, even if you think they're, even if you think that they're false. If you think they're false, that's fine. You can add on that comment, but you can't take things out that people said, cuz they said them. It's in the minutes. It's just for accuracy when you're approving minutes. That's it. And that's a pretty simple thing that I think you, all of you, hopefully understand. And discourse from the board and from the community just needs to be better. You know, the great thing that Travis and others have done to make these meetings available for everybody to see is that we can go back and look and see how things were before and how they are now, and it's starkly different, how this board operated before and how it operates now. And I'm not blaming anybody in particular, but the, just the throwing out of lies to see if they stick, or you've been lying, or you're being disingenuous. So those things just keep getting thrown out there, rapid fire. And then people from the community, they just talk when they're not supposed to. It's chaos, and you guys need to be better, and everybody out here needs to be better. When it's not your turn to talk, be quiet. When it is your turn to talk, talk. When it's public speaking time, you guys don't get to talk, they get to talk. Let's get back some decorum and run these meetings so in a way that the community can be proud of. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
I think y'all know me by now, but my name is Debbie. I live on Hill Road. I don't disagree with everything that was said. I think in the past, behavior has been questionable on both sides. I think things have been said, but I wanna compliment you on tonight. The board was ran with professionalism. You kept the meeting in control. People spoke when they should speak, and issues were addressed. And I appreciate that, because I've been at the last few meetings, and they could be a little stressful on both sides. So that being said, today on Facebook, I seen under the Swartz Creek community, where you're offering a home improvement course. And I was so happy. Because in speaking of our attendants and our students that are homeless, or people that are struggling with their home life, I can see where as kids lose that enthusiasm on attending a class that's a little more structured. They might not see the advantage of being in an algebra class or how to apply it to their life. They don't have that parent that's gonna support what they need to do in school. But in classes like this, that kids are not as geared for heading to a college, this is something that they might be able to apply and see a future in. So I, as a parent, and I don't have any kids, I mean, I got three, but they're all done and gone. I'm glad to see that we're offering some financial and money management, home improvement, things that kids can apply. So that's it. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush. Okay. Thanks, Travis.
I just wanted to see if we could set a record for time-wise on this meeting. I just wanted to see if we could set a record for time-wise on this meeting. Um, the last few months, we've talked about attendance and academic performance and I just been thinking about that a lot and I just think that we have a wonderful opportunity with that O'Brien Trust and some of these other things that we have this pot of money here, why couldn't we potentially create a reward system for our students like Chuck was mentioning, or the grades, which would expand it to everyone, like Kim was saying? Right now, we give that award as a scholarship and they leave. It really has no much impact on our district. So, just a thought that I want to throw out there as a third-party thought, outside thought, nothing, you know, controversial. The money's there, could we use it in a way that enhances Jamie's program at the high school, maybe provides a school store at the middle school? So, just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, Travis. When you said you were going, I thought maybe you were actually going. That was a statement. All right, anyone else? It's getting late. Um, if there are nobody, if there's nobody else, um, let's move on to, uh, comments or questions from the board.
I'd just like to go because I have something quick. Um, I'm just passing these out. You can pass them down. I guess I need people. These are from the, um, Genesee County Association of School Board Members. If you'll notice, um, they asked that I pass these out so that we know these people are there. And if you will look at the bottom, there are four who are listed as mentors. And, um, I, they suggested that sometimes maybe we need to, uh, like, if we need an opinion or something, or you don't know how to bring something up, or you, you just want to talk to somebody else, you know, before you bring something up on the board, or you just have a question. Um, you, use them. Anyway, there's their numbers.
Thank you, Kim. And did you, did you not get one?
No, that's okay. I'll take a picture.
Okay, okay. I was going to say, I'll take a picture and give you mine, but, all right. Thank you, Kim. That was, that was great.
Oh, wait, here's an actual... Okay, I guess. So, I want to throw out something that I assume would be, and I am saying assume because I want Jim to clarify, what a homeless student would be. So, if a student goes and lives with his boss, is he technically a homeless student because he's no longer in the household that he's registered under?
So, that could be, it could be that broad.
I, I just, I know of that example where a kid, and he couldn't stay at my house, but, you know, he went to go stay with his boss. And I've heard some other people, since the homeless thing has come up, sometimes it's not what we think, they're not living in a cardboard box over there. So, you know, I had one parent reach out and say, "They just got displaced from their house on a Friday," like a, you know, family situation. They were in a different household, but they were considered homeless in our categorization. So, I thought about the student living with the boss that came to mind. Um, so again, it sounds like we have a bunch of kids living under the bridge, you know, that are homeless. Um, and I just wanted to clarify the comment about CPS getting involved with attendance. He actually clarified that they do not get involved. So, you might have missed that, but they do not get involved in attendance issues. Um, and I appreciate, uh, who made the comment. Now, so many teachers came up, thank you for being here and giving us your feedback. And it, it was that and it was, I think it was, uh, the board president, like, the feedback...
Free A is my name, by the way.
Thank you. I, I knew that and it was, it's, it's late.
It's late.
Um, that, like, reminding us, we need your feedback, you know what I mean? We, you know, I try to get in the buildings, by one-on-ones with Jim and Rod and talk to the teachers and talk to staff and ask them things that they need, but getting that feedback and getting the feedback from the students easier when I had a kid in the school, but I'm still here, I still come to their events and I still ask them as students what they like and what they don't like. And I think that's an important thing for us to remember, that we have to consider the people that are in the day-to-day, the students and the staff. Um, bullies. I will tell you, I, I've said this before, but my kid got kicked out every year in middle school. Um, and it was always a, you know, a kid punching and he punched him back, sorry, he got kicked out. But it, it, it's not my place to know, and I know this is a struggle because there was, there was one time that, that I really wanted to see the video, right? Like, I knew there was video of the situation and I was like, well, can I just see how this went down? I'm not privy to that before I was on the board, but I think sometimes we, I'm not saying there's not a problem, but, um, yeah, there was a, there was a pretty big incident last year that involved a student, that people wanted to know, they were on Facebook, what happened to the kid that did this thing? The school can't tell us, right? Nobody got to know what that kid did. And, um, I feel like there's an incident out there right now, if anybody watches news clips, a football player literally body slammed another player on the news. It's awful, it's awful. And, and everybody's out there, what happened, what happened? The district can't tell anybody, like, everyone, I want to know, but I have to know. I'm never going to get to know what happened to that kid who did something wrong. So I think a lot of times we lose, again, I know bullying is out there, my kid has had some incidences and it's out there, but I think sometimes we lose the fact that we want to know exactly what happened to this kid and we just can't. So we have to take sometimes with a grain of salt. And if we're not seeing, if it's blatant, your kid is still there in a situation in a classroom, that's different, right? We have to take that further, but I know this subject comes up a lot, so I just wanted to say, like, been there, done that, seen it, and I'm a curious parent, I want to know what happened to this football player, right? Like, I'm going to want to know and I guarantee they're not probably going to release it because it's his private information. That is all.
I just want to clarify, did you ask for his private information?
No, no, no.
The steps that you guys take as...
No, and I, I, what I'm saying, but I, but bullying comes up a lot and I just wanted to say, sometimes I think there's, we all want to know, it's curious minds and last year, there was an incident with a football player and, I mean, that was on Facebook and people were like, "We just want to know what happened." And not your kid, not your business was the, the parent comment that I was making back and they all want to want to know what happened with this kid, but again, so it's, you know, the school can't tell us as parents out there asking on Facebook what happened to this particular student, right? So there's, I just wanted to clarify that sometimes it's a matter of, we don't get to know. It, I know it's out there and if you don't get the response or you're seeing kids still in classrooms or whatever, um, because that happened with a situation with my son and it was like, do we, do we stay in the same classroom or not? And my son actually made the choice to leave and not be in the classroom with this kid because it worked out better for his schedule. But, you know, you just have to make sure it's happening, go in there and, and call, like, go up that chain of command.
I did. Nothing happened, that was why I brought it up.
No, and thank you, because now we know and now we can follow up with it as well, too. So, thank you.
This is like the one that happened this year. It's the second time a parent has come in and said that this year. Or the third? Yeah. Any other board comments?
Do have a couple. Uh, reference to the ordinance in Swart Creek, I'd love to read it to see what it actually says. However, so you understand the law, to arrest a juvenile, you cannot arrest them under a local ordinance. It has to be through state law and it has to go through the prosecutor's office in the petition process. So, that's the difference between a juvenile and an adult. So, no child's going to get picked up under that ordinance. They would have to get picked up under a lording law by the state or something else. You can type in MCL lawyering, you can type in whatever you want, MCL whatever, it'll pull up that statute or something close to it. Now, they could be arrested for that, but I, they're not going to get arrested under their new ordinance. Um, second thing, in reference to Jim's comments, I do agree with some of that, however, one of the problems that we've had here for years at Swart Creek, when I was on the board the previous times, is the minutes didn't always reflect the meeting. So, if we look at those minutes, which we do, there's a whole lot of comments that were made by the board and ma- and remind you, this is a meeting of the board, it's not the meeting of the administrators. It's the board meeting. Administrators are lucky enough to be invited. That's humor. It's a board meeting. So, while his comments probably should be put in there, if they can be proven that they're not accurate, they should be removed. However, there's a lot of other comments that are left out. And so that is the problem with board minutes. If you really look what board minutes should be consist, consist of, is for instance, when we take a vote on something, who brought it up, who seconded it, there was discussion, there was a vote. That's what that should look like. Because maybe they get all my comment, but they don't get any accounts. That's not a true reflection of the meeting either. So, our board comment, our board minutes probably should be adjusted a little bit so that they just take into consideration what needs to be in the minutes. Everybody's comments does not. And, and then to put someone's in and not someone else's is an issue as well. So, just a little bit on that, um... The reference, Michelle's target thing, the only thing I'll say about the target thing, I, I don't know that I want to compare to all of Genesee County, because we have some very, very poor performing school districts in Genesee County. So, I do like when you say the Metro League. I think that's a fair comparison. From, you know, it, it's demographic is, fits well with Flushing, Curzly, uh, I think financially it fits well. So, I do like the Metro, but, and I'm not going to blow some of the school districts out that I don't want to be compared to, but I, I even attended one of them. So, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to be, I don't want to be compared to that school district current day. So, the Metro League is a pretty good one. From economic standpoints, we fit well with Clive, Curzly, uh, Flushing, that, that would be, that would be good. Countywide, I, I don't, I don't, and, and I don't know how we can necessarily compare a Grand Lake Blaine either, when they're sitting with, what, six, seven thousand kids? No, I'm sorry, more like eight or nine thousand kids. So, I don't know that that's a fair comparison either.
I still want to be...
Well, I'm not a big Grand Lake fan either, but, but I, but I mean, that's not a fair comparable when we're sitting at thirty-two hundred kids and they're sitting at nine thousand. The Me- the Metro League is a pretty good fit. I mean, if we even want to go outside, uh, you know, to Corrana and Owasso, now we're getting s- school districts from outside our county, you know, but I would much rather see us do that because, you know, well, you do whatever you want. I just think Genesee County, just, Genesee County has some pretty poor, poor in the school districts. Um, I have a letter here from a gentleman, I think the rest of the board got this, it's dated August twenty-eighth, I'm not going to read it all. Um, I just want this gentleman, uh, he does kind of give away that I believe it's a gentleman. He refers, or they refer to themselves as a concerned citizen. And I will follow up with Jim on this, just in case this person's listening, he's talked about different, having more security in our buildings. And I, like I said, we got it a while ago and yes, we've had too many hot topics. Um, I think that was, oh, one last thing. Chuck. Three meetings ago, we brought up having an attorney do an investigation. It got told it was going to go on the next agenda and the next agenda and it's never been put on agenda, it's never come up for a vote. I think it was even tabled or postponed. Do we want to let that die? Do we want to do a vote on it? What do we want to do? Do we want to put it on next, next board meeting's agenda? But we keep kicking the can down the road, because I think what was actually said at that meeting was, "We just got this letter thrown at us tonight and there's a lot of information in there." It literally was a front half of a back page. And we've never seen it since. Just mysteriously disappeared, just like what I was complaining about with my two policies I want to talk about. So...
Was that a bill? There was a bill on the desk, on our thing or like a...
No, it was about having an attorney to do an investigation. I don't think you were here. So, you're off the hook. But we kick the can down the road and what we do is we kick the can down the road long enough that we forget about it. Well, I'm not forgetting anything because before I come to all these meetings, I write my notes from the last meeting. And I write them down so that they're here. So, are we done with that? Do we want to vote on it? Or do we want to put it on next, next board meeting's agenda? Right, well, so it can be, I'm not wanting to discuss it, what I'm saying is it just keeps disappearing.
Yeah.
Okay. And last thing, because I know everyone wants to go home. In reference to what you said about your children, what I would say to you is, is when you're not getting satisfaction with the, the building, administrators, the superintendent, whoever, go to the police officer and tell them that your son got grabbed by the face today and his head was shoved backwards and tell them you'd like to make an assault and battery complaint. Because under Michigan, but you can, you don't need the school district to co-sign that. And if the police officer tells you they're not going to do it, then I strongly suggest you contact Chief Bay. Because if someone grabbed, if I walk over there and grab you by the face and shove your head back, that fits an assault and battery.
And if I threaten to rape one of you guys, what happens?
A little slipper or slow with that, I mean, it's more of a threat or harassment, could be done stalking, there's multiple things that could be done there. And the other one with grabbing your daughter's hind end, that is a CSC, depending on her age, that's probably a CSC two, which is a felony. Now, the problem with that is, is proving that. If I smack you and say, "Good game," it's an unwanted touch and you're back to an assault and battery. If I smack your hind end and I say something sexual, that's a CSC two or four.
He said, "Oh, sorry, I was..."
No, no, it's, well, then, then you'd have to believe it is an assault and battery because you can't form sexual intent. But go to the police officer and, and let them tell you no, and then you can contact Chief Bay. Because I did a school resource officer job at Linden for eight years and if I had a little girl or a mommy or someone come and tell me that, I'd take your complaint. I don't know what the prosecutor will do with it. But again, those are petitions that have to go down to the prosecutor's office. So, there, there's another avenue for the fresh one. Don't, don't drag something up that's three years old with the police. They're probably going to shoot that down. But the one you said happened today?
I understand it's a consistent history of...
Okay, well, when you have, when you have one that's relatively fresh, contact a school resource officer and start there. Well, if you don't think you're getting satisfaction from the district, call Jim or don't even, don't even contact the school. Go to the police. I mean, it doesn't, you don't, if you get assaulted on the street, it's just like getting assaulted in the school. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to thank Michelle Paul for her presentation and her ongoing updates to the board. I, I find them very interesting, even when I've heard some of it twice, um, in academic achievement and here, it's, it just validates the importance of what you're doing. And to all of the educators who have hung out with us long enough, thank you. And if you're watching at home, um, you should be in bed. And thank you so much for your support. I also want to thank, um, Amy Hart and Kelly Hale for coming here tonight and for sharing the updates of what they're doing with the, um, Attendance Task Force. And I wish them a lot of luck and I hope that we can support them in whatever it is that they find is successful, uh, to help a variety of students and their families. This is not just a student issue, we know that. And it's not just a family issue. It's going to take people who, um, you know, really care about the kids when they see them during the day to connect with those families. And then to our new teachers, Annie Brimmer and Melissa Graves, congratulations, thank you sincerely for choosing Swart Creek. And with that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moving.
Support? Any comments or questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.